Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon on the screen below, or at Dejean, you can go to the back of the room to get the materials. Para acceder traducción, apriete en el botón del globo en Zoom, o en Dejean, puede ir a la parte de atrás del gimnasio para los materiales. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we're here to listen to any public comment there might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we'll be discussing are: Public employee appointment, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, conference with legal counsel existing litigation, liability claims, public employee performance evaluation, conference with labor negotiators, and that's it. Ms. Courtney, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you so much. We will be back for our open session meeting at 6:30 PM. Yes, can you hear me? Someone raise their hand if they can hear me. Nope. Nope, okay. Can you hear me now? Mr. Grant, can you hear me in the public? Nope. Louder? Okay, how about now? How about now? A little better, a little louder, please? Okay, how about now? Louder? Okay, how about now? Louder. Let's just go up a few more. Okay, how about now? Okay, can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy. I'm the clerk of the Board of Education. President Smith Folds asked me to chair tonight's meeting, so I thank you in advance for your patience, as I have not run a meeting in a while. I would like to welcome all of you to our board meeting. To access translation, please click on the globe icon on the screen below, or at Dejean, you can go to the back of the room to get the materials. Para acceder traducción, apriete en el botón del globo en Zoom, o aquí en Dejean, puede ir a la parte de atrás del gimnasio para los materiales. We are now returning from our closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have an opportunity to make public comment. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person, through the Zoom app, and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned into staff, they are placed in order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers, one at a time, and alternate between public comment at Dejean and on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon on the Zoom app or by pressing *9 if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers is permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after staff presentations for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and 1 minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now, we're gonna move to our opening procedures. First, we have a pledge of allegiance. Everybody who's willing and able, please rise.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Now, we're gonna move to our land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chachan-Yum-Wuakma-Carke-Naloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. For our liver and body acknowledgement, we're gonna ask President Smith Folds if she could read that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge the continued contribution of labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. And now, we're gonna move to our West Country Crossed Unified School District Board Anti-Racism Statement. President Smith Folds, would you mind reading it as well?
Thank you so very much. The West Country Crossed Unified School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and communities. Racism, implicit or explicit or implicit, stands in the direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect upon the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into the larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment, where each student, staff member, and community partner is a respected and valued member of WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being by building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding the West Country Cross Unified School District staff, students, and community to living the standards of anti-racism in our schools.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Dr. Hurst, can you please do a raw call?
Absolutely. President Smith Folds?
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler?
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Phillips is not here at this time. Trustee Christian?
Good evening, President.
Trustee Abdugahparov?
Good evening, President.
Trustee Palkar?
Good evening, President.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Hurst. Okay, now, we're gonna move to one of the reasons why most of you are here, which is our wonderful recognitions of our students. We have four different recognitions. So I'm gonna pass it to Dr. Hurst, who's gonna introduce who we're recognizing today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. We have a number of people that's being recognized today. We first have our Steelers program, and I'm gonna ask Trustee Christian to introduce the person that's going to be recognizing our Steelers. They can come up to the podium. And for the board, we're gonna ask if we can go down. We want to shake their hands as they're receiving their certificates. Is that okay? So we're gonna move down as the Steelers come up. There'll also be a photo opportunity for the board and the Steelers and each group.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanna say, first off, we are the 9U Richmond Steelers. Yes, league champions, regional champions, national champions. And we did that all for Richmond. Also, I wanted to say thank you for inviting us, honoring us today. We know we was honored by the city of Richmond about six weeks ago. So to be here is another honor to be here. We appreciate that. Thank you again. Throughout the season, we did go through some triumphs. We had situations, and we still prevailed. All right. We got student athletes over there. We had about 15 students who were football players that had scholastic honors throughout the season. We did honor them within our organization. Just wanna say thank you and give them a hand first for all what they did. We give y'allself a hand over there back there. Don't be shy. Give y'allself a hand. Richmond Steelers been around 50-plus years. We've had cheerleaders, some that's over there with the El Cerrito Gatos right now. Can I have a hand on how many El Cerrito Gatos is Richmond Steelers? That's it? Raise your hand. Don't be shy. With that being said, we just thank you again, and we just wanna honor our kids as y'all honoring us. If we can start off, I'm gonna start off with Patrick Burton. This kid right here, I'm gonna say that about this kid right here, Patrick Burton, he had our winning touchdown international championship. Wasn't for him, we wouldn't be here right now, probably. All right. Next, we got Dyson Davis. That's our QB1. Dyson Davis, come on up, kid. This right here. He was the 10U best quarterback in our league. He was number one quarterback at the 10U level. Dyson Davis. Damon Dixon, come on up. We call him Fat Dad. But he enjoyed to be around. Made a lot of good plays this season. Appreciate you, Fat Dad. Amazi Parnell, we call him Amazi. This little kid right here, he played a big part in our defense, but the little, he was the littlest on the line. Thank you, Amazi. Alonso Poli, come on up, Zo. This is our starting running back. Pound the ground hard. Outside linebacker, go get him, kid. Reno, I don't think Reno's here. Reno? We got Jalen Thompson. Come on up. Receive it. All right. Next, we got Damian West. All right. I appreciate you. All right. We got a lot more players, but they didn't not show up. Probably still at practice or chose to go somewhere else. But we definitely appreciate this. It is an honor to be here. We appreciate Richmond. We appreciate the school board. But I do wanna say one thing. We are having a fundraiser this Sunday right here down the street from 1:00 to 5:00. If everybody can come out and support the Richmond Football Youth and Cheer, we appreciate that. Come get a plate, $25 for a combo plate. We got ribs, links, chicken. Come out and support. If you don't care, come out and support. Just donate, help us with the fundraiser. Thank you.
And next, we're gonna have Mr. John Uwaki come up, and we're gonna recognize those that participated in the science fair.
Good evening, board, staff, community, students, everybody. It's really exciting to be here for this event. If you recall, our district science fair happened in February, and we get students from all over the district, from many, many schools. And then, at that fair, some students win first and second and third place, and those students move on to the regional Bay Area Fair, the Golden Gate Stem Fair. And then, even at that fair, some of the students even go on to the state level. So we have some of those students here tonight as well. Tonight, we wanna recognize students who placed in first, second, and third place at the regional, the Bay Area, Golden Gate Stem Fair. So we have certificates for them, and we'd love a photo. These students, like, didn't do this for a grade, didn't do it for extra credit, did it because they love science, they love the competition, they love what they're doing, and that's, that's an exciting thing. You know, when we're doing things, not because we have to, but because it's a passion. And that's what we wanna instill in our students, is to follow their passions. So really fun that they're doing that today. So about half of these folks, I have 12 students. So I'll call your name, and when you hear your name, would you come up? And we'll take a photo right up there. Charles Frey from Mira Vista. Shriya Satia from Karamatsu. Genevieve Suie from Penole Middle. Edith Reynoso Parra from Penole Middle. Suri Zaraparvar from Deanza. Samuel Schmitz from Deanza. Jude Gachalian from Hercules High. William Hobbs from Hercules High. Nisa Yow Fletcher from Hercules High. Christopher Chang from Hercules High. Samuel Kim from Hercules High. Matthew Samonte from Hercules High. Okay, so these folks finished either first or second or third place in the Bay Area Golden Gate Stem Fair. Shria received the Thermo Fisher nomination, which means she has the chance to go on to compete at the national level, actually. And then, Christopher and Samuel and Matthew all entered in the state fair as well, the California State Fair. So really exceptional. I wanna say congratulations to each one of you. Thank you for your persistence. Thank you for representing our district so well with like passion and creativity and innovation and in all of those ways. We just wanna appreciate you and congratulate you tonight. And I think if there are any teachers, can you come on up as well for the photo? Mr. Ayer, come on up from Penole Middle.
Can we give them another round of applause, please? Thank you. We also wanna take the opportunity to recognize Administrator from El Cerrito High School, Jacob Grand. Thank you for being here, Mr. Grand. And, thank you, sir. And also, we have two groups from El Cerrito that we wanna recognize. We're gonna bring up Goldie Williams, head coach, to recognize the team for outstanding contributions for cheer.
First of all, we just wanna say thank you so much for this honor and this opportunity to come here. So first of all, we wanna say thank you to all of our school board members for inviting us. We appreciate it. We also wanna say thank you to Dr. Hurst, who has been our champion and also invited us. So thank you all very much for what you're doing. Just so that we can get things addressed. I used to be a coach for the Richmond Steelers. So just so that you know, just like the Richmond Steelers, EC, we put on for our city. So let's start with that. And as the people may or may not know, but I just wanna make it clear that they not like us. So that being said, our model at El Cerrito High School is that we are student athletes, and that's what we teach our athletes. Our athletes not only continue on to universities all over the country, we have over 90%, and over 90% of our cheerleaders go to four-year universities. Some go to two-year universities. One is injured in the military, but every single one in our program has gone on to do something phenomenal. Not only do they go to these schools throughout the United States, well, actually, one is also in another country, but they graduate, and that's what we push. We tell them that we don't care about them going to college. What we care about is that they graduate from college. All of them go on, and they do great things in their communities. So why are we here tonight? We're here because we took our girls, we took 10 of our cheerleaders to a regional cheer competition, and they actually won first place in hip-hop. So then, we had the audacity to decide that we were gonna take these same young ladies and take them to Las Vegas to a national stage, national competition. And mind you, it's never been done before at El Cerrito High School. I don't know if it's been done in the district. It was the first time we went to a national stage, and we got there, and they won third place. These 10 young, these 10 young ladies that we took worked very hard. They worked throughout the process, and we wanna celebrate them, as well as we wanna celebrate our coaches. And, yeah. So I'm gonna read their names off as they come up. Two of the young ladies are not able to be here, but I'm still gonna say their names. As I read your name, please come and get your certificate, place it on your chair, and then stand up and get prepared to perform. Mariana Bergens. Bailey Marshall. Ariana Trotter. Dallas Turner. Sanai Van Hook. Chastie Walker. Erica Walker. Chakari Warden and Zania Warfield, as well as Ashlyn Highlands. I also wanna take the time out to recognize our coaches. If you're here, come up and get your certificate. Aziza Thomas. Brandy Marshall. Courtney Garner. Nikia Moore. Tanya Warden. And Tiara West. And to all the coaches in the building, I just wanna say thank you for doing what you do. When you're a coach, there's not a lot of thanks sometimes, and there's no money that comes with it, 'cause if they do give you some, you put it right back into your program. So to all the coaches in the building, everybody, please, give them a shout-out and give it up to all the coaches in the building. And while the ladies get set up, I just wanna take a moment while they're preparing to just to give a shout-out to ECHS football team. Our football team has been the Division II NCS champs and won second place in the 2A region. They have gone to the playoffs in the last nine years, and eight years, they are the league champs. They've had a minimum of 15 kids go to college and three kids go to the NFL, and they did a phenomenal job this year. So give it up for our boys.
Richard?
Thank you very much. And now, we would like to introduce Mr. Keith Johnson, our band director. And he's going to be coming up and recognizing his students. And then also, we're going to have a performance from the band as well, Jazz Ensemble. Thank you so much, Mr. Keith Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Keith Johnson. I'm the band director at El Cerrito High School. And just want to say thanks for, to the school board for the opportunity to recognize our Jazz Ensemble from El Cerrito High School. They've had quite a year this year. They've attended four competitions, and they placed first in all the competitions they attended. And most recently, they won the California State Jazz Championship. So we got state champions over here in the, in the band. However, tonight, they're being recognized for their acceptance to perform at the Midwest Clinic in Chicago this December. The Midwest Clinic is a conference that brings together music educators, musicians, and in a weekend of performances, and also for some professional development. There's about eighteen thousand attendees that attend this. And just, it's sort of hard to describe because it's not a competition, but we did have to audition for it. We were one of only three high school bands selected from across the country. And so they'll be performing there and sharing their talents with the audiences in Chicago this December. So thank you to the board for the opportunity here and for the recognition to perform. So I'm going to call up the students alphabetically here. So if you guys want to come up, you can leave your instruments on your seats. We'll come up and then you guys can shake the school board members' hands, and we go from there. Alright, so first guitarist Willow Bowden, Bowden, sorry. Ah, trumpet player Mateo Diaco. Ace trombonist Benji Dada. Alto saxophone is Sean Vivian. Just so we keep the line moving here, then our bassist Guy Gibson. Tenor saxophonist Javier Gutierrez. Trombonist Amelia Harrington. Also on trombone Lucy LeBeck. On baritone sax Kenji Malawala. On trumpet Brenna Moore. On trombone Arvid Pakrel. On tenor sax Julian Rosenthal. Our drummer Isaac Satzman. On trumpet Sam Schweitzer. Followed also on trumpet Lyndon Stacy. On piano Evan Steinkoller. On alto sax Nigel Weiss. And while they come up here, I just, I told them this morning and yesterday also how proud I am of them. It's been a banner year for the program and for them in particular. You'll get to hear them here in a little bit, but, man, really, it's been an awesome year, guys. So thank you so much for everything. So let's get, I guess, our photo in, and then we'll play for you guys a little bit.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. We do, we also thank Evan Steinkoller on the piano. I've just been informed he got a scholarship for piano for Northwestern University. Let's give it up for him. I'm standing this here. Thank you so much, students. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Goldie. Take care.
Thank you so much, everybody, who joined us. And congratulations to all of our students and staff for everything they're doing. We're now going to move to public comment. We have a lot of public comment tonight, so we're going to go... Oh, I'm sorry. See, I already missed that. We're now going to report out from closed session. Dr. Hurst, do we have anything to report out from our closed session?
Absolutely. The board voted to approve the appointment of Todd Irving as principal of Pinot Valley High School. The roll call vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoya, yes. Trustee Reckler abstain. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Laura Webb as principal of Montalvin Elementary School. The roll call vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoya, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Item A 2.4, the board voted to reject claim number 637825. The roll call vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoya, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. And trustee Phillips, absent. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. Now, we're going to move to public comment. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Do we have any public comment tonight? Please, I'd get us started. Thank you.
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Andrea Savala.
Ah, okay. The red button? Yeah. Okay. Hi, good, good evening, district staff. My name is Andrea Savala.
Good evening, staff. My name is Tru Yi. And today, we came here representing our respective clubs, the LSU and the BSU, to discuss a matter of importance in regards to the current state of the high school clubs in the district. As you know, the ability to host any future fundraisers was cut, for as far as we know, four weeks ago, causing many problems unanimously for all the clubs across the district.
Because of this change, clubs had to figure out and cut drastic corners to fund our last events, as well as even cut them out altogether. As a response to your decisions made in regards of the cutting of any future fundraisers requested by any club by the rest of the school year, we'd like to ask for you to give us... we'd like to ask for you would give us new opportunities to raise money through fundraisers before the school year ends to help our graduations, as well as our next upcoming board.
Another issue we have is the time it takes to have a fundraiser and/or field trip request to be approved. The system currently being used is blatantly inefficient. Before a field trip or fundraiser can be approved, it must go through the hands of several people, while only one person is required from the district to approve the fundraiser. Please keep in mind that said person is a secondary executive director in the district. We do not understand what a secondary director, or a secondary executive director with the workload they already, they were already given has to do with the approval of fundraisers. This point does not even spread light to the fact that these request forms have to go through a largely unnecessary amount of hands. My proposition is to create a system where clubs can request directly to another employee working in the district, or even a volunteer working in the district, to have these field trips and fundraisers approved. Having to rely on other people outside of your understanding, your cause to host field trips and fundraisers drastically lowers the chance of fundraisers making it suits correct destination. Just.
Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Kenya Cervantes. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Kenya Cervantes. I'm here to once again ask the board to reconsider the three Vista Virtual Academy teacher cuts that they are attempting or going to make for next school year. At the last meeting, you heard my child speak as they had just found out that two of their teachers were being cut. And I think that if you're not going to listen to anybody else, you should listen to the children. The kids are speaking and their voices matter. And every child deserves qualified, certified, great expert teachers teaching them. The Vista Virtual Academy has been a lifesaver, is a lifesaver to a lot of families and students who cannot, for whatever reason, make it in your brick and mortar schools. You have to think about our neurodivergent kiddos, bullied kids, and everyone else who thrive at the academy. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Erica Cruzes Zavala.
Muy buenas tardes a todos. Este, mi nombre es Erica Cruzes. Y felicidades a los, a la banda y al grupo que bueno que lo le reconocieron. En el paso de nuestras vidas tenemos que tomar decisiones, pero cuando esas decisiones involucran a nuestra comunidad, a las familias, pero sobre todo a nuestros jóvenes estudiantes que no son buenas decisiones, van a afectar su formación educativa y estamos hablando de un gran problema. Ya que por desgracia los más afectados son los estudiantes más vulnerables, como los grupos afroamericanos, los grupos latinos, nuestros aprendices de inglés, nuestra academia internacional, nuestros scouts, nuestros maestros. Siempre seremos los que estemos pidiendo por los que otros tienen. Requerimos que vean los datos para tomar cualquier decisión, que vean los planes de educación y cuáles son los parámetros a seguir solo porque son por ley. Se supone que deberíamos incrementar y mejorar los programas del DLI y no disminuirlos, sino reforzarlos solo porque es por ley de California. Entiendo que si no tienes, no puedes hacer las cosas, pero creo que debemos de hacer una balanza de dónde, de cómo, de cuándo y cómo deberíamos de actuar. Mi gente necesita de ustedes, mis hijos necesitan de ustedes, y recuerden que ustedes son servidores públicos y que esta comunidad está llena de mucha gente que amamos a nuestra comunidad. Solo quiero una educación de calidad por el bien de mis hijos, por el bien de la educación y por el bien de todos estudiantes que vienen también a pedir sobre la academia internacional. Gracias.
I'm gonna translate the message that she just gave to you. I'm gonna translate it in English, if it's okay with you. She congratulated all the members and all the students that did a great job performing today. In our daily lives, we make decisions. However, when those decisions are not good and they involve the community and families, and above all, young students, this can affect our education, then we have a big problem. Unfortunately, the most affected are the most vulnerable, African-American, Hispanics, English learners, the International Academy, the scouts, teachers. We will be the ones asking for what others have. We ask you to look at the data before taking any decisions. Look at the educational plans and the guidelines that are required by law. We should be increasing and improving the DLI programs and not decreasing them, but reinforcing them. I understand that you may not have a lot right now, but I believe that we should think and balance the where, how, and when we should act accordingly. My people needs you. My children need you. Remember that you are public servants and this community is full of people that love their community. All I want is a quality education for the wellness of my children and the well-being of education. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Nisa Bremer. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Your hand is raised on the Zoom, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. That's probably an accident. Sorry. Should I wait until I get called here?
No, it's okay. Come forward. But if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak that has their hands raised on Zoom, please go and fill out a form at the entrance of the building to make sure that we have that on record. But please, go ahead. Thank you.
Great. Hi, board. Nice to see you all again, here once again to talk about Fairmont Elementary. As you all know by now, we have been notified that we are losing our Title I status for this year, or for the next year, sorry, for 2024, 2025. And our school is the second largest school in the district. We have over 530 kids. Being that we have such a large enrollment, there are over 225 recorded students who are free and reduced lunch. That number is definitely higher, which means that we also have 106 students that are in the special education program. We have 159 students who are English learners. And our site budget for 2324 was 129,000, which includes our LCFF funds and our Title I funds. Our site budget for 2425 school year will be $46,000. That is a difference of $83,000 in our site budget. With the reduction of our LCF funds, which is a 25% reduction and a 66% reduction altogether with loss of our Title I funds. I realize that the Title I funds being removed from our school is not a budget cut. I realize that. I realize there are a lot of other schools who need Title I funds. But it is a budget cut because those dollars directly impact our kids every day. Like I said, we have a very large percentage of students that are free and reduced lunch at our school. We have a large percentage of English learners. Our numbers have not changed from last year when this money, when this this status applied to us. Our percentage changed by point one point, which is one half, like half of a child. So that means that our status as a school, our children have the same needs. Please reinstate our funds. Our children need this money. It goes to the kids every day. It's.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Casey Benson. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, board members. Chief Financial Officer, Kim Moes. My name is Casey Benson. I am a social studies tutor at Richmond High School's Internationals Academy. Last week, we found out strict one, increase the class size for our. Newcomer students. And they want to take away the collaboration period that is protected for their teachers. Increasing the class sizes for newcomer students and cutting this protective collaboration period for teachers will have significant negative impacts on both students and educators. The increased class sizes will decrease individualized attention for our newcomer students, decreasing the amount of supports that could be in place for a smaller group of students. It will provide less opportunities for teachers for one-on-one interventions. It limits the language practice in the rooms. The cutting of the collaboration period will also increase the teacher's workload. It will lead to teacher burnout and it will decrease students' active engagement class. For all of these reasons, please reconsider the expected changes to the MOU for the Internationals Academy at Richmond High School. Please remember to keep the teachers and the students best in your mind. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jeremiah Rome.
Hello, board. My name is Jeremiah Rome and I work at the Internationals Academy at Helms Middle School, known as HIA. I wanted to share a recent experience from my weekly seminar discussion with my newcomer students. We were discussing the Trail of Tears when the conversation suddenly took off. Middle school students began discussing issues of land repatriation, reparations, cultural annihilation, language deaths, powerlessness and power. They spoke in Spanish, quiche, mam, and English. I was incredibly proud of their conversation and told them, this is what we've been working towards for the past two years. Now they look forward to these discussions every week. These same students could be silent, disruptive, or absent in another class. Their rich ideas and connections unheard and unexplored. This result is possible only because of years of hard work and daily collaboration with my HIA colleagues and the attention small class sizes allow. Last Thursday, we were informed of planned cuts to newcomer education. These cuts would directly and dramatically curtail our ability to provide effective instruction for our newcomers. I wish you could have visited my class to see what is happening and understand why we need to keep our small class sizes and collaborative time intact. I have brought testimonies from students who couldn't come tonight if I may leave them with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You can give them to, yes, thank you.
Our next public comment is Amanda Foster. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. On behalf of Faith Mazurchik, Vista Virtual Teacher, to whom it may concern. Vista is a wonderful program where students and families of all walks of life can come and receive specialized help and attention from qualified teachers. As supervising teachers, our role is to partner with the families to ensure the best education for our learners. It takes committed families, students, and parents and qualified teachers for the success of our program. If you take away our teachers, you only have one half of that equation. You need both parts of the equation to be successful. Even further, taking away our teachers and placing them with educators who are less qualified for their positions is not only a waste of resources, but a waste of talent. These three teachers have talent. Not everyone has the beautiful gifts of expertise, experience, and passion that they each bring to their jobs on a daily basis. To cut them and fill their positions with other teachers would still allow things to keep running, but it would not be able to replace the talent and passions that are necessary to do the jobs they've been appointed to do. As a district, why are you trying so hard to tear down something that is blessing our students and families? Money is money. Aren't our students worth having the absolute best possible teachers? Respectfully, please consider how taking away qualified and skilled teachers in their subject areas and replacing them with other teachers without the necessary experience, credentialing, qualifications would be damaging to the beautiful program we have built where your students are thriving. And now, on behalf of Josette Fisher, parent. As a mother of two students currently attending Vista Virtual Academy, I would like to ask you to please reconsider any further cuts at our school. My youngest has been a student at Vista since Ms. McCormick launched the new school two and a half years ago. Prior to Vista, I have looked for an independent study program for years, but unfortunately, none of them were a good match for my family. Vista has not only met, but continues to exceed all of our expectations for an educational program. Ms. McCormick, along with our supervising teachers, are and have always been attentive and available. My children are excelling in this program. Our learning is tailored especially for them. Removing qualified teachers will have a huge impact on our students' educations, needs, and abilities. All schools thrive when we have caring, qualified teachers. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Paul Scateline.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Scateline. I teach science for Richmond High International Academy. I am one of the founding teachers, and once again, I stand here and I have the necessity to advocate for our ELD student population because you continue to disregard the value of the internationals program. Before internationals, your ELD students sat unnoticed in classrooms wasting precious learning time. I was an ELD student and I spent four years of high school like a phantom, trapped within the walls of your useless classrooms, which were incapable of serving the needs of ELD students then. I graduated with minimum English language acquisition. You finally have an effective program for ELD students with well-trained teachers and you want to dispose of the program like trash, regardless of reclassification numbers. LPAC data shows tremendous language growth in most students. More importantly, no data shows the amazing student interactions and engagement that takes place in our classrooms. You have to see it in person. King Moses, the international teaching model is not capable, capable to function without teacher collaboration time. And if you increase class size 35 students, it will not work. Where is the equity for ELD students? Shame on you for putting us in this situation once again. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jane Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, or good afternoon or evening, board. I again wanted to advocate for our students and students across the district. Please do eyesight checks at the beginning of the year. In my class of 23 kids, I had seven that need glasses. In the first, first grade, second grade combo, there are 11 second graders and four of them need glasses. Unfortunately, a lot of our families are on the state provided insurance and they're telling us now it takes upwards of four or more months for them to get their appointments and get these glasses. And unfortunately, with summer here, it's almost impossible for me, because I drive 100 miles round trip, to advocate and help them find Lions Club or some organization that might help them pay for eye appointments and to help them get glasses. We really, really, really need our students to have the eye check at the beginning of the year, so there's more time. If my kids, my seven, don't get glasses, they won't be tested again until, at this rate, the end of second grade. That's a number of years where they can't see properly and all of them have distance at seeing the board. I did get that fancy Promethean board and it's amazing, but it's not as big as the screen that I got through Donors Choose from the projector. So my kids are still struggling to see it. Please have our vision tested first for the benefit of the children, their education, and the teachers. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Daniel Cervantes.
Hello. Good afternoon, district staff. My name is Daniel Cervantes. I am a teacher at Richmond High School. I teach world history in the Internationals Academy. This is my third year teaching in the district and teaching in the International Academy. I've been able to work with some of the most resilient. I've been able to work with some of the most resilient students in the country coming from different parts of Central America, South America, Asia. And some of the things that I've learned working in the International Academy is that students need a lot of support, language support, socio-emotional support in order to thrive in this country and succeed. Working in the International Academy, I've been able to learn from my colleagues during our collaboration period. I've even been able to fly to New York and observe the international model across the country and see how a collaborative method and a small class size can support our students. I'm here to talk to you all about the MOU that was released last week that is threatening to cancel the teacher collaboration period and also increase our class size to 35 students. If we analyze classrooms and you all that I'm sure are educated in education understand and should know that increasing class sizes would be ineffective for our newcomer students that need language support. Okay, so I appreciate the land acknowledgement and the anti-racist comments that were stated in the beginning of the meeting, but all of that is just for show. If we continue to put our students and give them the low end of the stick, we need to show up for our international students, show up for our newcomers, our indigenous students who come to this country as English as their third language. So those comments, that land acknowledgement and anti-racist comments at the beginning of the meeting, you need to demonstrate that, you need to show that, not just come up here and speak, but represent our students, represent Richmond High and support the International Academy. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say thank you, Dr. Hurst and trustee, student trustee and Dr. Hurst, your staff, who has supported our campus this week. As you know, we lost one of our students, life was taken and it has been a very, very challenging week. So thank you for the additional support for staff as well as students. As I've been sharing with my students this week, to look out for each other, to be my sister or my brother's keeper. Sometimes your friend or somebody that you know may not be able to speak up, but also just be there for them. I want to say thank you to our staff who have, some of our staff have been feeling safe and vulnerable enough to share their emotions with their students. Sometimes students think that we don't have feelings, but students have been able to see this week that we adults, we do have feelings, we do care and we do shed tears. I want to thank one of my colleagues who allowed me to come into his space and close the door and be able to just kind of vent and let it go, so to speak. Also, I told her I was going to say this when I came to the next board meeting. So to my classmate from 1989, class at Kennedy High School, Dr. Moses, I just want to say congratulations, classmate. She and I happen to be on the same flight. She's going to get hooded for her PhD and I'm going to celebrate my mom earning a master's degree. And it happened to be the number of the flight was 1989. I said, if that was not divine. And so I just want to congratulate her, Dr. Moses, and continued success to you. And great things, as I continue to tell my student, great people, great achievements, great accomplishments do come out of your school, John F. Kennedy High School. Thank you and everybody, have a blessed night.
Our next public speaker is Carol Ahuna.
Hello. Okay. Hello. My name is Carol Ahuna. I am the 910 ELA teacher at Richmond High International Academy. This is my first year working in WCCUSD. I moved from Monterey specifically to get to work in this international program. I have taught ELD for four years now. At my old school, we did not have a beneficial program like this in place. Instead, I had 37 newcomers in one class. It was impossible to support the learning needs of that many students with such a wide range of educational capabilities, including learning gaps as well as socio-emotional needs that result from the experience of migration. Since working at RHS, I feel more capable because I know each of my students. I'm able to interact with all of them during class and I have the time to follow up about their needs through dialogue with other educators. Since working at RHS, I feel like a more effective educator. The collaboration with my colleagues has been essential to my development as a newcomer teacher. I have worked with my colleagues to align on classroom policies and procedures, learning objectives, language targets and socio-emotional supports. I've gone from a model that does not work to working in a model here in our district that does work. The decision to increase class size and eliminate district support for collaboration will basically return us to a model that doesn't work. I don't understand how this can be seen as supporting students. On the contrary, it's the kind of decision-making that drives teachers out of the profession. Please advocate to maintain the structure of our current International Academy system. The students and I desperately need your support. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Erin Callantine. Please unmute yourself. Oh, nevermind. Sarah McIntyre, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, school board and superintendent. My name is Sarah McIntyre and I'm a parent of a child at Fairmont Elementary School. I'm here tonight to request that Fairmont not be stripped of its Title I status for the 2024-2025 school year. We are already losing $14,000 of site funds due to a 25% cut to our LCFF. The additional loss of Title I funds would mean a total budget reduction of over $83,000. That is a 66% cut on top of additional layoffs and reduction in services. And in addition to district funds, Title I status qualifies Fairmont to receive a range of other resources such as free or discounted field trips, programs and grants. That means that losing Title I status could have an even bigger impact on Fairmont funding and services. Fairmont is poised to lose its Title I status despite a recorded percentage of students receiving free reduced lunch dropping by only 0.1%, which amounts to half a child. As the second largest elementary school in the district, Fairmont has even more students with low incomes than 14 other schools in the district that will retain their Title I status. While 45.2% of students qualify for free and reduced-priced meals, 30% are English language learners and 20% are in special education programs. An unduplicated count of students who qualify for free reduced meals are English learners or are in foster care remains at approximately 60%. Flipping our Title I status from year to year despite the continuing demonstrated need of our students will have drastic negative impacts on our student achievement and safety. We greatly appreciate your consideration of this important request and hope that you will restore the critical Title I funding that our Fairmont children need to thrive, to grow and thrive. Thank you so much.
Our next public speaker is Angel Castillo.
Buenas tardes. Me llamo Angel y llevo seis meses en la Academia Internacional Richmond High. Hevenidos a decirles que no eliminan la academia internacional. Cuando estuviera en Richmond, no entendía nada de inglés, ni escribir, ni hablarlo, pero los maestros me ayudaron a entenderlo y hablarlo y también a escribir. Pero cuando llegaban, no sabían qué hacer ni entendían qué decían los maestros, pero ellos... Pero ellos podían ayudar y nosotros los ayudamos a entenderlo, pero llegaban más y más. A los maestros se les hace difícil controlar a 35 estudiantes. Puede controlar a 20 entre 25 estudiantes. Ayudarlos y entenderlos y pronunciarlos. Esto es todo. Muchas gracias y feliz tarde.
Our next public comment is Jen Jojo's mom. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Thank you, Board, for listening. I'm here to advocate for the students and teachers at Fairmont Elementary where my daughter is a kindergartner. And it looks like you've heard quite a bit about the fact that we are losing 66% of our funding through the Title I cuts as well as our site funding cut. I'm requesting that the Board restore our Title I funding or at the very least create a step-down budget over several years so that this abrupt cut does not cruelly harm our most vulnerable students and teachers at this very critical point in their lives, especially around English language learning, literacy and special ed learning. What concerns me most is the fact that teachers will be losing direct resources that help our kids learn to read and, sorry, my daughter's looking at me right now, and learn English for the first time. Subscriptions for education materials critical for childhood literacy and English language learning will be lost. One aspect that's particularly hard on our teachers is this unpredictability of Title I funds being cut. There is sort of this frantic move where people are trying to now fundraise to get access to the resources that they have had for the past couple of years, but now don't. And so our teachers are sort of stuck with their backs against the wall, unable to utilize their, you know, tried and true, really exceptional learning materials that have been helping our children succeed. Given the only 0.1% difference in children qualifying for free and reduced lunch, this cut was not anticipated. And so our students and teachers are essentially going to be left with whiplash trying to make up for these funding cuts that were unexpected and now we have, you know, three weeks left of school. Our school, the other thing that I'm very concerned about, especially as a therapist, is one in five of our kids in our school have special needs and these cuts are going to affect intervention, counseling and teacher time for those kids. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Stephanie Delgado.
Now, yo. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Delgado. I have two years in International Academy. The academy has helped me learn in English and I have better pronunciation in English. The academy has helped me to adapt in Richmond High and their rules, preparing me to speak English with the other persons, to practice reading books, we practicing in writing and speaking well. With my class saying we all helping each other and listening to, to listen every careful to people we talk. And I will have shocking reaction because there are way a few students in the same classroom. We have chairs and some students, there are different levels on English and they will not be able to learn in the same level. Thank you so much.
Our next public speaker is Shelley Wharton. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Superintendent Hurst and Board members. I'm here along with many others to express my frustration and sadness at the pending program changes for the International Academy. I'm in my second year of full-time teaching at Richmond High and I student taught in the program during grad school and the reason I came to teach in this district was for this program. My voice is breaking because the people who have spoken already have said very true things and I'm just very proud to work alongside them. So we are, the pending cuts are about raising the class size and taking away our collaboration period. Both are very essential to the way we run, both in giving students the attention and support that they need and also giving us the time and space that is paid, as it should be, to prepare the lessons that we need to prepare. Yeah, and I would just like to finish with the, well, two things. The fact that we heard about this Thursday. We've garnered a lot of support in that short amount of time and we're really hoping that you'll hear us out. I want to end with a quick journal reflection from a student in my second period. She's from Guatemala and she's amazing. Here we go. "I think the International Academy is meaningful to me because it helped me when I came and didn't know English. One reason that I think this is because I improve in my English successfully. For example, in this work as a beginner, I improve a lot in my vocabulary words. Another reason that I knew, another reason is that I knew beautiful persons in my life as teachers and as classmates that became friends and people that are there to support me. I'm so grateful for all the support and help the academy gave me since the beginning until now. Please let this support remain and support our program. Thank you."
Our next public speaker is Hugo Enrique.
Hola, mi nombre es Hugo Enrique. The International Academy helped me in my language practice, in my goal work. Y yo le diría que si cerrarían la academia si yo fuera llegado cuando la academia estuviera cerrada, todo se me complicaría porque no es lo mismo que te platiquen las instrucciones a que tú las traduzcas en Google. Y yo pienso que cada alumno nuevo que llegaría a Estados Unidos en la academia se estuviera atascado en otras academias sin saber qué hacer porque no iba a saber las instrucciones correctamente y se le afectarían sus grados por la razón de que no está en una academia donde hablen español, donde le enseñen inglés. Thank you for your attention.
Our next public comment is Anna Chavez. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Highland Elementary School and I'm calling in because I'm quite concerned about the condition of the building. I believe that we are dealing with a situation of sick building syndrome. There are numerous things going on and students are continuously getting sick. My students were moved from one classroom to another one way down the hall and they are still experiencing breathing problems, rashes and bloody noses and terrible respiratory issues. So I'm very concerned and I would like to know what the Board could do to help us to come investigate this and see exactly what is going on. I appreciate that they came and did a walkthrough. However, students are still getting sick. I'm getting sick. I'm having chest pains that I did not have when I was out for three weeks at home. And so I'm highly concerned. We have multiple staff members now who have developed high blood pressure issues and we really, really need help with this building. So if you guys could please take the time to truly investigate this situation and keep us in contact with what is going, you know, keep us updated as to what you are finding and not finding. My parents, the parents of my students are worried and this is, something has to be done. We really need a rebuild and I just pray that you guys will take it upon yourselves to do the right thing, please. We need it. The community deserves it and we have faith in you that you will do the right thing by us. We appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sarah Menonix.
Hi, I am a parent of two kids at Fairmont Elementary and a volunteer math club teacher at Fairmont Elementary. With the current proposed budget, our school's site budget will decrease by $83,000 from $125,000 to just $42,000 next year. This is partially due to lower LCFF funds but primarily due to a loss of Title I status and funds despite having no significant decrease in our student population need. Of our 531 students, 255 are eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. This is more students than 14 schools in the district who will receive Title I funds. Our students contribute significantly to the funds the federal government distributes to the district, but will benefit zero percent as proposed. With this budget, our school cannot even afford our site supervisors next year. And the SSC has asked the PTA to try to make up the difference. With this loss, our teachers cannot afford most of the resources they need to differentiate their curriculum and provide pivotal interventions for our students. I'm here to ask that you please reconsider reinstating our Title One status for next year. Thank you.
Our comment is Edgar Seraphin. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, members of the school board. My name's Edgar Seraphin and I'm the English teacher for the Internationals Program at Helms Middle School. Our program has been effective because of our current pillars, including a common collaboration period and small class sizes. I strongly believe that the Internationals Programs at Helms and Richmond High represent a real commitment to our community, which is that we see and support our newcomer population. But with the proposed cuts and increased class sizes, we are going to lose something special. In my class, we just finished a podcast project where students researched a historical outbreak event and recorded a script that they researched and wrote. If you don't know, getting middle school kids to record and have their voices heard is extremely difficult. But they did it and they did in English. You could see the pride in their eyes when they heard each other's projects. Bright spots like these don't come easily. So having a common collaboration period and small classroom sizes are crucial to our programs. I fear projects like these will become too difficult to support if we have larger class sizes because of the complex content and linguistic demands our newcomers have to navigate. Worse, I fear that our students will lose a sense of community and belonging if these proposed changes occur. Please save our internationals programs. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lucas Menonix.
Good evening, board trustees um and district staff. Uh, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, my name is Lucas Menonix. I am the chair of the the Fairmont SSC. I am also the chair of our DL caps committee. As you've heard multiple times tonight already, uh, Fairmont is 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 facing a massive budget cut from our site budget uh for next year. Um, instead of focusing on the Title One, I would like to focus on the other part, which is the the funds that we get from our LCAP. Um, if you, Dr. Moses last night at our DL caps uh meeting shared with us that only three point eight million dollars are allocated for all of our fifty-two sites for next year. This represents about six, Dr. Moses, correct me, about six percent of our LCAP funds for next year. As we know, as we've seen through evidence, those site dollars are some of the most effective site dollars uh in the LCAP right now. I know at our at our school, those go directly to teacher interventions, to counseling, to site supervisors, all which have have a day-to-day effect on our student achievement. So my ask tonight is for us to rethink how we're allocating those dollars, especially at schools like ours, which have a large population of of our unduplicated count at sixty percent. To think about how we reallocate those dollars so that we are trying to achieve our goals as a district, right? Our goals are around student achievement. So let's make sure that we are really focusing those precious dollars. I know it's a lean. It's a every year we get leaner and leaner. So my my request is to relook at how we're allocating those LCAP dollars so that they are continued to be the most effective and have direct uh impact on our student achievement. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Saida. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public speaker is Rich Seber.
Good evening and thank you for this space. My name is Rich Seber. And I was a founding member of the Internationals Program at Richmond High School. Six years ago, Richmond High School faced an equity issue. Newcomer students were not meeting graduation requirements, nor were they graduating A to G eligible. The problem was addressed by adopting the Internationals Model, which relies on manageable class sizes and teacher collaboration to integrate language development into core classes. The model also supports teachers in supporting the socio-emotional needs of refugee and immigrant students, as well as supporting students with limited or interrupted formal education. As the board learned from the Elmo presentation two months ago, the data demonstrates this program's success. The impact of the program on the culture of the school was so profound that it was expanded to Helms Middle School. And last year, this board directed that it be expanded to Kennedy High School. Now we learn that in the name of balancing the budget, the two key elements of this program are being eliminated. As the district is no longer willing to support class-sized caps or the essential collaboration period. This decision does not account for data that demonstrates the program's success. It does not include the voice of site leaders whose schools have been transformed, nor does it include the voice of teachers, students, or their families. Our goal, yours and mine, should be to eliminate the inequalities in education and not to tear down the programs that do just that. We ask that you demonstrate your commitment to supporting secondary newcomers by maintaining the Internationals Program in full. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Saida. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. I'm sorry about that. Uh, good evening, Honorable Trustees and Dr. Hurst. My name is Saida Said and I'm a I'm a teacher at Fairmont School. Um, I would like to urge you to reinstate our school's Title One funding for next year. You've heard from some of our committee members, um, and they have given you important reasons why our funds should be reinstated reinstated. Um, I would like today actually to take uh um this opportunity to to correct some of the any distorted optics around our school. Fairmont is in Alserito and it shares the same zip code as Harding and Madera. But Fairmont is unique in that it borders the cities of Richmond and Alserito. It is the school that serves both Richmond students as well as Alserito students. The city of Alserito is relatively wealthy, but Fairmont is far from wealthy. The neighborhood is located is uh consists of mostly older post-war nineteen forties bungalow homes and multiple units. As you have heard, we have the largest number of low-income and English-born students. Um, and it is the only school in Alserito that has not been rebuilt. Right now it houses at least thirteen portables. Our PTA budget is tiny compared to the neighboring schools. So getting sixty-six percent of our budget slashed would devastate our ability to meet even the most basic needs of our school, our students. Uh, so recently our PTA uh has to spend eighteen thousand dollars of its already small budget to fund yacht supervisors, to very people who keep our students safe on the yard. This is unprecedented and it takes away uh resources that teachers like me need to meet um to help our most struggling students. So I would like to urge you to please reinstate our funding. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Cecia Mavari Mejia.
Hi, my name is Cecia Mejia and I spent my freshman year in the Internationals Academy. I came to Richmond three years ago from El Salvador. And my knowledge about the language was basic. I wasn't able to understand or speak even in a conversational level. I only spent one year in the Internationals Academy, but I was able to acquire all the knowledge that I needed to continue my journey in another academy and take it to the next level. Right now I'm taking AP classes, honor classes, college classes. And I started to prepare to apply to colleges. And I reclassified this year. This couldn't have been possible without the teachers of the Internationals Academy. They have been a crucial part in my life. They have made me grow as a person and helped me to adapt to the country. Uh, I can say that they were one of the only those that genuinely care and worry about for me. And without them, the idea of going going to college was nothing more than a dream, just a dream waiting a whole life to be achieved. The emotional support that I received and I'm still receiving has made my high school years an amazing experience that I wouldn't change for anything. And now I can see myself in a future where I'm successful and I put into practice the skills that I have learned, like empathy and responsibility that are values of the Internationals Academy. This was all possible thanks to the support that they have given me, the Internationals Academy, and provided the first year of me being in this country. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Carmen Terazas.
Hi, my name is Carmen Terazas. I have been in the Internationals Academy for approximately three years. The academy the academy had helped me with and the academy had helped me by supporting me with my mental diseases. I suffered depression and anxiety. And with all the help of the teachers of the academy, I would not be here today speaking in front of all of you. The academy also helped me to improve my English skills. When I arrived to Richmond High School, I didn't speak English, much less write or read. But after being three years at the academy, I can say that it was what helped me the most to improve my English skills. A clear evidence of my improvement is my OPAC results. The first I the first time I did the OPAC, I was in ninth grade and my result was fourteen seventy seventy-four, which is the first level. The second time I took the OPAC exam, I was in tenth grade and I got fifteen ten, which is in second level. And the last time I took the OPAC, it was in eleventh grade and I was only thirty points away from reclassifying. So think about whether it's a good idea to eliminate the academy and which and we did eliminate the results, the resources and opportunities for those for students who are recently arrived to the country. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Monserrra Gonzalez.
Before we move to the next public comment, um, I did want to point out we have uh only a couple of minutes before the hour of public comment ends. So we have two more speakers at two minutes. We are going to extend public comment unless uh someone on the board um has an objection. But we're going to extend at one minute per speaker. So I want to give you all heads up there speaking after the next two speakers. You're going to get one minute. Um, because there's still after the next two speakers, uh, fourteen more people. So we want to make sure that you get that time. So just uh keep that in mind for your speeches. Thank you so much. You may you may start. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Monserrra Gonzalez. I'm a junior at Richmond High. Although I'm not part of the Internationals Academy, I have seen the impact the positive impact that it has had on my peers in terms of their education and confidence. Coming into a new country without school support is incredibly difficult. The Internationals Academy has helped out those individuals who have felt out of place, find their place in our school and receive assistance throughout and even after high school. As a Richmond High student, I have seen the impact the Internationals Academy has had on students. And because of that, I ask you guys to all reconsider. Um, to I'm sorry, to all reconsider your decisions, your decision to remove the Internationals Academy. Thank you.
Our next public comment, our next public comment is Matilda Cruz.
Hola, mi nombre es Matilda. Soy de Guatemala y llevo seis meses en academia internacional. La academia me ha ayudado a adoptarme a la escuela de Richmond High School. En mi primer día de clases, los profesores me dieron compañeras para asegurarme de que conocí los procedimientos de la clase y me ayudaron a contrarle mis clases. Y me ha ayudado mucho aprender esto para aprender más inglés porque solo español sé porque apenas sigue en este este Estados Unidos. Yo era, no, no. Okay, gracias.
Our next public speaker is Gerardo Natania.
Well, hello, I'm Gerardo Sanchez and I'm a student in the Internationals Academy at Richmond High School. I was arrived to this country uh less of two years ago and I studied at Helms Middle School. International Academy in Helms Middle School was really helpful because now, as you can see, I can speak like um, I know, intermediate level of English. And then I'm a ninth grader in the International Academy at Richmond High School. And I'm proud to say that that year when I was, I don't know, when I was um beginner at the Internationals Academy in Richmond High School was really hard because I don't speak a lot of English. Now I don't speak really good English, but I'm proud to say next year I don't will be more in International Academy. But at the same time, I'm proud to say I was part of International Academy. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Derek Jodoy Reyes. Derek Reyes.
Good night, everybody. Um, my name is Derek Jodoy Reyes. I am from Honduras and I have been in the International Academy for ten months. This academy helped me a lot because thanks to this I learned more English and learned how to write in English, which was the most difficult thing for me to do. My skill of listening and understanding people's increasing thanks to the teachers who are very attentive to us. They are very good peoples and this academy has also helped me to a lot to adapt to American culture. Science I didn't get used to this. I also meet uh very good peoples at this academy who I consider to be other family for me. Science I arrived at this academy, I have been much happier because of the incredible peoples and teachers that I have met to this day. Thank you. Thanks for your attention.
Our next public comment is Francisco Garcia.
Buenas tardes a todos los presentes. Este, vengo a dar mi punto de vista sobre la decisión que piensan tomar acerca de la academia internacionales. Este, estoy en el grado nueve y llevo tres meses y medio en la academia internacionales. Eh, la cual me ha ayudado a entender y comprender un poco el inglés y la cual creo que ayuda a todos a avanzar un poco más rápido en el inglés debido a la confianza que nos dan los profesores. Y pues, si por algún dado caso se llega a cerrar, creo que sería más perjudicial para los alumnos en sí, que son los que necesitan aprender inglés y no se van a sentir tanto en confianza con un entorno donde solo hablen en inglés y no tengan el apoyo de algunos profesores que hablen español. Desde mi punto de vista, me parece una mala decisión también de que haya más estudiantes en las clases de internacionales ya que nos van a perjudicar al no tener tanto espacio para entender las cosas y el momento para.
Our next public. Our next public speaker is Manuel de Jesús Ramírez.
Buenas tardes a todos los presentes. Eh, yo, yo me llamo Manuel de Jesús Adolfo Ramírez Corado. Eh, llevo siete meses acá en la Academia de Richmond High School. La academia me ha ayudado a desarrollar un método de aprendizaje por el inglés, eh, así mismo ayudándome a pronunciar las palabras y a entender un poco a los profesores que solo hablan inglés. Eh, sumar al treinta y cinco estudiantes a las, a las clases sería un impacto para los profesores y así mismo como para los estudiantes. Eh, la Ca, la Academia de Internacionales es una ayuda para las personas recién venidas a Estados Unidos. Les ayuda a aprender inglés y también les ayuda, les enseñan nuevas cosas, nuevas tradiciones. Eh, cerrar la Academia Internacional sería una mala idea. Gracias.
Our next public comment is Melanie Fuentes.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Fuentes and I was arrived by saying that the only reason I am standing here today is because of the International Academy in Richmond High School, High School, as well as the International Academy in, in Helms Middle School. I have, then, I even have the nerve to say that the only reason why I'm alive to this day is because of the emotional support I have received. I have no idea what this has even opened a debate. Why do we want to take the opportunity from these students? Why are they being denied the opportunity to an equal education that other students are receiving? They've known, these teachers in International Academy do not only teach science, math, history, the basic subjects. They also help with, help people with traumas. Trust me as a immigrant student. It is not easy to go through every obstacle on the way to this country. Imagine risking your own life to come to this country for opportunities. And I know they're going to cut my audio, but I don't care.
Our next public speaker is Diego. Diego.
Hola. Hola, mi nombre es Diego. Este, hoy vengo a estar aquí a prácticamente tengo pena. Estoy aquí para decirle de que no encierren la academia internacional. So, porque es, es como muy importante para nosotros los inmigrantes que no sabemos este inglés y nos ayuda a prepararnos para irnos a meter como en una academia donde solo hablan inglés y no, y como que no explican en español. Así que nos ayudan nuestros profesores de habla hispana que apoyen, que nos apoyen a ellos mismos, tanto como nosotros, a aprender más inglés y así estar en, en comunión contra todo entre, este, ¿cómo se dice? Together, eh, todos juntos. Este, y también este, en apoyarnos entre nosotros mismos y decirnos palabras o cosas para, en inglés y así aprender.
Our next public comment is Genesis Abril Rodriguez. Genesis Abril Rodriguez.
Hola, buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Genesis Abril Rodríguez de la Academia Internacional. De mi punto de vista, pienso que la Academia Internacional no debería desaparecer porque nos ha ayudado muchos estudiantes que acabamos de llegar al país. Yo tengo un año y medio de estar aquí y siento que la Academia Internacional me ha ayudado bastante a mejorar la pronunciación en inglés, a escribir, a escuchar y a entender muchas cosas que antes no entendía. Así que de mi punto de vista, nos está yendo demasiado a todos los que acaban de llegar y no me parece una buena idea lo de treinta y cinco estudiantes en un salón porque siento que afectaría la concentración de muchos estudiantes. Gracias.
Next public comment is Johanna Isabel Salgado.
Hola, muy buenas tardes, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Johanna Isabel Salgado Fores y vengo de representación a la High School de Richmond High. Bueno, pienso que esto es una mala idea porque pienso que es algo muy importante para nosotros los estudiantes, que los maestros, eh, tenemos el apoyo de ellos para, para poder en nuestro proceso de, de estudio, porque pienso que el inglés en este país es muy importante porque puede ser una, puede ser una puerta para el éxito y pues gracias a ellos tenemos el apoyo, nos sentimos en casa porque nos dan la confianza para, para seguir. Gracias.
Our next public comment is Eric Banegas.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eric and, and I have been one year in this academy and the academy helped me because I learn, I'm learning more English and I love very well because of the values that they have in the International Academy, for example, support community and I think that if you, if you put more students, it will affect our learning, our learning methods because there will be too many people in a, in a single classroom and that will make things more complicated. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Eces Banegas.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eces. I have been in the International Academy for two years. What I have to say is that it's an excellent academy for newcomers to this country and even more so when you don't know English. Personally, it was helped me a lot since, since when I came from my country to, to the United States and I didn't know anything about English. And I know, and now I know a little and I feel ready to be able to change, to change academy. But it's all thanks to the International Academy. And so I will ask that you please think very carefully if you want to remove it. Since it is a very good academy to, to be able to learn English and feel more in commu, in community and safe at a school and more with the language. So please think about it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Destiny Centeno.
Good evening. My name is Destiny Centeno. I have been at the International Academy for two years. Like every teenagers who come from a faraway country, I was afraid of, of not fitting in with anyone. However, these teachers at this academy showed me from the beginning that I could, that, that I could look to them for help. Also, they always let me know that I could trust who I am and what I could be. So thanks, thanks to them, I have been able to achieve a certain part of who, of who I am now. On the other hand, before, I did not have much knowledge of the English language. But thanks to this academy, I can now understand it and start a conversation with any person. Finally, I personally consider myself as a leader thanks to the skills that have helped me develop this academy. And regarding the decision that is being considered, if in that case a classroom of thirty-five students were given, I will feel overwhelmed because I know I couldn't offer my help to all.
Thank you. Our next public comment is Mitany Valasquez.
Buenas tardes a todos. Me siento triste al saber que ustedes van a tomar una decisión muy difícil o, o como sea. Este, ya que hace dos años ingresé a la Academia Internacional y desde el primer día me sentí bienvenida y en un lugar seguro donde puedo expresarme como persona, como una estudiante latinoamericana. Y más allá de eso, sentí como los maestros me apoyaban y nos apoyaban y nos siguen apoyando cada día. Y eso lo podemos ver dentro de los salones porque más allá de lo académico, nos apoyan emocionalmente a seguir nuestra meta y a seguir aprendiendo inglés. Porque ellos nos dicen que nada es imposible y que nosotros lo podemos lograr. Y yo soy la prueba de eso. Y aunque ahorita no esté hablando inglés, pero voy procesando eso. Gracias a ellos, hoy yo estoy aquí.
Our next public comment is Neo Catcock.
Hello, Superintendent Board and Staff. My daughter is currently attending second grade at Fairmont Elementary. My son will be entering TK there in the fall. I'm commenting tonight on Fairmont Elementary's loss of Title One status. I urge the superintendent and board to reinstate this status. I'd like to make a few points about why. There are many that could be said. The exception to keep Title One funding last year was the right move, descending, deciding to end the exception. After years of Title One funding has helped, uh, ends the years of Title One funding that has helped Fairmont students achieve. As a member of Fairmont's SSC since two thousand twenty-two, I have witnessed the growth in performance achieved by Fairmont students, which is among the highest in the district. Student performance growth is the most important measure of a school's success and the dedication of Fairmont's teachers and effective use of scarce funding has been fundamental to Fairmont's achievement. Loss of Title One funding puts this achievement at risk. I again urge the superintendent and the board to reinstate that status. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Anayeli Ochoa.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Anayeli Ochoa y soy estudiante de la Academia Internacional en Helms Middle School. Creo que sería injusto que el distrito cerrara las academias internacionales porque todos los inmigrantes llegarían a una escuela donde nadie habla su idioma nativo. Todos merecemos la oportunidad de poder llegar a una academia internacional de cualquier escuela y que los profesores puedan hablar su idioma nativo con los estudiantes. Al cerrar las academias internacionales, los inmigrantes perderían la oportunidad de poder llegar a una academia internacional y aprender inglés con más facilidad. Gracias.
And our last public comment is Fernando Banegas. Fernando Banegas. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much for everyone who made public comment. Muchas gracias a todos que vinieron a hacer comentario público. Uh, we are now going to move to our agenda review and adoption. Uh, if there are no objections, we will adopt the agenda as is. Okay, so adopted. Thank you. We're now going to move to consent items. Were there any consent items people would like to pull? Trustee Reckler?
Yes, from contracts, just a handful. Christie White, School Services, Spring Board Collective.
I'm sorry, trustee Reckler. Can you hold on one second? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't hear you. Go ahead.
No problem. Uh, for eight contracts, just a handful, for brief discussion, Christie White, School Services, Spring Board Collective, Tutor Works, and Calculus Roundtable.
Sorry, trustee Reckler. It's, uh, Christie White, Spring Board, Tutor Works, and what was the last one?
Uh, School Services, Calculus Roundtable.
Thank you. Any other items for her? Okay, uh, without objection, we will adopt the rest of the consent calendar with the four contracts that trustee Reckler pulled. So adopted. Thank you, everyone.
Point of order, it's five. Point of order, it's five.
Oh. Thank you. Sorry about that. Let's redo that. Without objection, we will approve the rest of the consent calendar with the five items in contracts that trustee Reckler pulled. So adopted. Thank you, trustee Reckler. Uh, okay, now we're going to move to our superintendent communication. Uh, Dr. Hurst?
Thank you. Can we pull up the report, please? And next slide. We wanted to take this opportunity, uh, Dr. Moses, you see your picture up there? This is, uh, for you. We wanted to just take the opportunity just to acknowledge, um, Dr. Moses. Now, um, she just recently graduated, I think from North Carolina, correct? East Carolina University for their doctor degree. So we wanted to acknowledge her for earning her doctor degree and, um, well deserved. And we also want to just acknowledge that, uh, Dr. Moses recently, and forgive me if I don't get this all the way right, Ms. Neely Johnson, the AXA Region Six CBO Administrator of the Year. So we wanted to give her a round of applause for that as well. Uh, I think the other piece, um, that I want to share about Dr. Moses, she's been in this job for under a year. She came to me and actually she was recommended by, um, a good source as well to me. And I sat down with her and she, um, had a desire to be a CBO in this district. And I sat down with her and she, um, had a desire to be a CBO in this district. And she's committed and I already knew that she was very attention to detail. Uh, but one of the things I will share with you is that she understands her responsibilities and she ensures that she's holding everyone in her department to their responsibilities and putting them accountable for achieving results. Um, she is certainly well on our way to making sure that we are physically solvent. And one of the other things I'll share with you is recently, we got a, a Fitmat, um, analysis back. And I was, um, sharing with Dr. Moses that really we should be celebrating because when we look at the, the score, the health score for this Fitmat, uh, report, it was twenty-seven percent. And if you really look at the, the indicators from low risk, moderate risk, and high risk, we're moving closer and closer to the low risk category. And, um, I was talking to Dr. Moses that we are also on a path for a positive certification as well. And this is under her leadership. And just to remind everyone, the last, uh, analysis, health analysis report that we, um, received in 2021, when I first got here, it was thirty-seven point four, uh, percent. Um, so more in the, um, moderate category. So we wanna just, um, commend her for her leadership. And really, I was just, uh, communicating with our board, just sharing that, um, you have a very tough job. I was listening to, to everyone, all the public comment. And you handle it very well and you're looking out for the benefit of our kids and our district. And we just wanna share with you, we appreciate you and your leadership. And we're gonna give you some flowers. Take a picture. Thank you for all you do, Dr. Moses. Next slide. Next slide. I'm sorry, um, we also wanna just acknowledge, even though the, um, ESN Spring Formal Dance has passed, we wanted to just share that, uh, the students had an amazing time. And, um, Mr. Guthrie, Director Fleishman is not here, but we wanted to just commend him for his leadership, putting everything together. And those who were, uh, present, um, I did get word and I did, I think I saw a picture of, um, Ms. Neely Johnson's son doing a dance as well. So we just wanted to just bring that to everyone's attention. I heard it was a, a great dance. So thank you so much, Director Fleishman, for all you did. You're listening in. Next slide. And then Plan, Plant to Plate Student Internship Graduation. Um, this is from our high school CTE students. They celebrated the completion of their seven-month paid internship with Plant to Plate. And also, the students got hands-on experience growing organic food in the garden and professional food preparation and catering. And through this program, students learned a wide range of transferable skills and the career support such as money management, teamwork, public speaking, interviewing, performance evaluations, and more. So congratulations to them. Next slide. And I won't read out, um, all of the graduations, uh, but just letting you know, we have our graduation schedule out. And, uh, one of the things we'll share is the upcoming ones. One, we have May seventeenth, our OESA Black Graduation, six P M. at Dejón. And then we'll say also on May the eighteenth, we have the Middle College Graduation in Pinot Valley Theater at ten A M. And we'll leave that and we'll continue to have this on future meetings as well. Next slide. We also wanted to continue to just share, we have our African-American Students of Honor Ceremony, May the sixteenth, here at Dejón. Also, that's from six P M. to seven thirty P M. Next slide. And then Thursday, May sixteenth, is Turn It Up After-School Program Dance Showcase. And again, that's gonna be here at Dejón, five P M., seven P M. for the show. Correction, go ahead, Ms. Neely Johnson.
Um, it will be held at Helms.
Oh, at Helms?
Yes.
Thank you so much for the correction, everyone. It's gonna be held at Helms, not at Dejón. And then we have Reclassification Ceremony, May the twentieth, Pinot Valley High School in their quad. Five thirty P M., seven thirty P M. Next slide. And of course, we wanna, um, just acknowledge, um, all of our veterans, our fallen veterans or living soldiers, non-combat military personnel and their families who sacrificed for us all to live in our community and in this country. We wanted to honor them, esteem them, and to thank them as well. Next slide. And then also, we wanted to just share with the community and the board, we have our Community Job Fair, May twenty-eighth from four to six P M. We invite all of you to join our Community Job Fair, Pinot Middle School, on May twenty-eighth. Next slide. And then just wanted to highlight, uh, what's been happening in the Governance Committee. I won't read off all of the policies, um, but we have a number of policies that we're looking at. We've looked at thus far, the Governance Handbook. We have some feedback, uh, from, on that as well. We've looked at the Anti-Racism Statement. The Board has approved that. We've looked at the Anti-Racism Policy. Have some feedback on that as well. And then we've looked at the policy with, uh, student trustees pay and high school credits, and we still have some work to do on that. We just wanted to let you know what we've been doing in the Governance Committee. And our next meeting is June the third, from one to three P M. Next slide. And that concludes the Superintendent Report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hearst. Uh, Board, now we're gonna move to questions, if there are any for the Superintendent Report. Does anybody have any questions? Uh, President Smith Folds, go ahead.
Dr. Hearst, do you agree that Dr. Moses is the best CBO that we've had so far?
Absolutely, yes.
I'm complete.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Since I don't see any more questions, we're gonna now move on to our next item. And congratulations, Dr. Moses. Um, we don't have any action items tonight, but we do have, uh, four big discussion items. So first, we're gonna start with the Strategic Plan Presentation. For the Strategic Plan, uh, Dr. Hearst and staff are going to present. Um, and then we're gonna open it up for public comment. Thank you so much.
So I'll be presenting the Strategic Plan. Uh, we do have staff available. Um, there are a number of action items. When you look at the goals and the strategies, there's action items. All of those action items fall under an area, so we do have staff available. But I'll be talking about the Strategic Plan, uh, process myself. I wanted to take the opportunity before I started discussing this. Uh, this has been a journey. It's been over three years. There's been a lot of people who've participated in this process. So I wanted to start off by thanking the executive team that's sitting here. They've been instrumental in every piece of the strategic planning process, so thank you so much. And then there's been stages, uh, those who participated in the Guiding Coalition, the logistics team, the planning team as well, the strategic planning team. Specifically, we wanna call out, um, President Smith Folds. She's been instrumental, um, set in on a lot of those planning sessions. Ms. Neely Johnson, especially this Phase Two. Um, her and her department has been instrumental in putting together a lot of this as well, her and her directors. And then Tracy Logan, especially in Phase One, when I first got here, just leading. Rosa Cornejo and Genesis Munoz, thanking them for behind the scenes. Community, staff, students, parents, university officials. So many people have participated in this process, so I needed to start off by thanking all of them. Brave minds, bold leaders, big dreams. That's what we're trying to do for our students. Uh, Board, we have, uh, a lofty task, uh, ahead of us. But we are trying to create brave minds within our students. We are trying to create bold leaders and also encouraging all of our students to have big dreams. Next slide. We wanted to just start off with, uh, strategic planning and what is strategic planning. As we know, there are several definitions out there, but the definition that we've landed on, uh, strategic plan is a term organizations use to describe a high-level plan for achieving long-term goals. I just wanna pause for a second just to highlight, and I'm gonna share some examples with you, that what you see that's loaded, uploaded to the agenda is a high-level plan. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done. I'm gonna explain that throughout. Um, there's a lot of conversations that need to happen with the organization, with teachers, and with educational partners. But I'm sharing with the Board that this is our first step in bringing a high-level plan to our Board. Uh, next slide. And I wanted to just share with you and just spend a moment and just share with you some other examples of strategic plans that are out there. Um, and of course, we know there's more than a thousand districts in the state of California. And I wanted to just select some that's in this area, but also in Southern Cal. And if we could just open up, um, maybe San Ramon. And if we can just scroll through that, what I want you to do is just get a sense of what's common in some strategic plans. So here you can see, um, something in common is the goals and the strategies that they have, and just keep strolling through. So again, they have several goals, but then they've taken those goals and they've broken them down into strategies. And then let's close that one out. Let's go to Vallejo City. And let's go through that one. And just keep rolling through it, please. So here you see they have a vision. Keep going. Mission. Core values, beliefs. And then they have pillars versus goals. And then close that one out. And then let's look at, um, maybe Long Beach. And let's scroll through that one. Stop at the first page. You can go back up a little bit. So here you can see they have the graduate profile, adult profile, which is different from some of the other ones. A systems profile, core values, and keep going down. They have a theory of action as well. And then they go through their objectives. So they're calling them objectives and they have several objectives. Okay, let's close that out. And for the public and the Board, those are just for you to look at. Um, I wanted to share with you, our strategic plan has those elements. We don't have pillars, but they go into this format. So this is what you're gonna hear. You can hear us talk about the mission, the vision, core values, graduate profile skills, profile of a caring adult, goals, strategies, and action. One of the things that's a little unique also from feedback that we've received is we've also incorporated an executive summary. We've also included a SWOT analysis, which are the strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and threats. And then one of the things that's unique about our plan is we've also, uh, started incorporating other plans, um, in our strategic plan. And I'll talk about that, uh, more in depth. Next slide. So we wanted to share some key terms with you, how they're used in our strategic plan. A vision, of course, throughout, we've been talking about the vision is the what. It provides a picture of what we want for our students in the future. The mission statement is our why. And it really answers the question, why we exist, our fundamental, fundamental reason for existing. Our graduate profile, you hear as well. These are the knowledge for what the students need to know. The skills, what they need to be able to do. The dispositions, which are the attitudes, beliefs, and characteristics that we want our students to have, that students should have upon graduating from our schools. And then we have adult profile, which are the skills and dispositions that adults working in West Contra Costa should have in order to facilitate all student growth and, and success. And then our core values is here as well. There are beliefs about what is important. And also, our values is belief about how something should be. And then, as I said, we don't have pillars, but we have our goals that defines our priorities. And then we have our strategies, which are a few. So when you look at our strategy, you'll see a few of them in each of our goals. These are our non-negotiables that are getting implemented, and it's an approach that we're taking to achieve our goals. And then we have our action steps. These steps are to operationalize our priority goals. And then we have metrics for success. Next slide. So here, um, what's different from our process and most strategic plans that I've either been part of in the past or have seen and viewed is that we started off with an equity audit and we have equity findings as well. And you can see that we've had equity audit findings in curriculum instruction in our schools and schedules, how we're scheduling our students, uh, lack of professional learning, so there was findings there in business and finance around physical solvency and position control, human resources, and ensure that we have structures and systems in place and looking at our hiring processes and then authentic communication to all of our educational partners. Those are our findings. Next slide. And then this slide is, is really important. Um, this slide was done in a course over three years. The mission and vision statement was done over the first year and a half. Uh, the equity statement already existed. The core values was over the last portion of this year. And we can see our mission statement, our revised vision statement, our equity statement that was already in place, and the core values. What I will share and you'll see also in the plan is that all of this was derived not by a small group of people, not just by the executive team or administrators. A small group of people, not just by the executive team or administrators. It was derived by our community, our students, our staff, our educational partners. And you can see our core values here as well that are outlined. Next slide. Also, um, in our statement, what we, um, have is our anti-racist racism statement. But what we are proposing is that we take our board a statement. And use that statement. Um, we had a different statement in there, but we want to be consistent with what the board is doing. And what the board has approved. As well. So you'll see us utilizing the board anti-racism statement. Next slide. And as I shared, the graduate profile skills are derived from the community, students, parents and other educational partners. And you can see what they shared was important, uh, for our students. Literate, effective communicators, self-reliant, data-driven decision-makers. Effective, empathetic civic leaders. Next slide. And this is not in a lot of the presentations. I'm sorry, not in a lot of strategic plans. Um, I've not seen the caring adult profile in a lot of strategic plans, but we have this in our plans. We plan on incorporating this in every fiber of our hiring process as well. Next slide. In the next few slides, we'll talk about, um, just the process. Um, which was unique. We had the guiding coalition. We transfer from the guiding coalition to a strategic planning committee. But in both processes, you'll see. Um, as many people that wanted to be involved were involved. We started with students. In both, uh, categories and really use technology, um, especially in phase two. To really address a number of students. Next slide. And this here just gives you a little bit of feedback on. The number of people who have been involved in the process. Um, as we all know, this is broken up by families of schools. The first phase, we had more than sixteen hundred responses. The second phase was a little more than fourteen hundred responses, but what was really important about. The second phase is the number of students that we were able to get feedback from using technology. Next slide. And here's some of the comments that we've heard from stage one. Uh, what students were saying about winning anti-racist educators. But also looking at the system of support, um, that we're providing for our students. And also a portion of where students were saying that they want to own their own unique initiatives. And own their own destinies and their own end games and careers and passions. Next slide. And then also stage two, you could hear what students shared in the student summit. Um, and what the community shared in the town hall meetings. And everything that we have here, again, this is just to share with you that. Um, a number of educational partners participated. And everything that you see from the mission, vision, core values, every statement is from our community. And not just a small group. Next slide. And then we have a theory of action. And one of the things I'll share with you is. Looking at the equity audit, which is unique from many strategic plans that I've seen. We've taken the equity audit and we've made that into our theory of action. So it looks familiar when we engage authentically. By having honest and necessary conversations. And we apply the lessons of those conversations by creating universal systems. And structures, which is another one of our equity audit findings. Then we'll pay relentless attention to equity, agency, achievement. And delivering on the promise of public education. And next slide. And again, this was a conversation, uh, amongst the team. Once we got all the feedback that led to all of those statements. Because we had an equity audit that was very specific. We used a framework. That shared, here's our current reality, which was the equity audit findings. And how do we get to our ideal state? And we decided that the goals, um, should align with the equity audit findings. So our first goal is around authentic engagement. Our second goal. Since that was a finding as well, is around universal systems and structures. Our third goal aligned to the equity audit findings is around relentless attention to achievement, agency and access. Next slide. So what I'll share with you is just how. The goals are laid out, each goal. Uh, aligns to what I just shared, aligns to the equity audit finding. And from the goal, we have a strategy, which I shared are. Um, a few non-negotiables that's going to lead us to getting to the goal. And then what's not here, but what's in the strategic plan are actions. And metrics for success as well. And again, the actions allows us to operationalize. Uh, the strategies that's going to get us to the goals. So again, the first goal is around authentic engagement and then the strategies. That will get us there. Next slide. The next number two is around universal systems and structures. In the same process, we have a few non-negotiables. That are our strategies that allow us to get to the goal. And then what's not here are the action steps. That allows us to operationalize, to get us moving so that we get closer to our goal. And then the next slide. Is goal number three. Which is relentless attention to achievement, agency and access. Which again, um, you have your non-negotiable strategies and then you have your actions and your metrics of success. And next slide. So I want to talk about this, uh, this is really important for the board and for everyone to understand. I wanted to start off by sharing, uh, strategic plans are really high level plans. Uh, th- this is the first level of work. Um, the next level of work is really about unpacking. So what I mean by that, I shared with you a process that was collaborative, had the community. Involved and we created a mission statement, a vision statement, graduate profile. Profile of a caring adult as well. At the next level of work is once that's approved, is we have to bring all of this back to staff. All employees, teachers, classified. Educational partners, external partners, then we have to unpack all of this. So I want to share an example. Of the next level of work. Can you open up, um, that right there? So this is an example of the work, um, that I did in another district. Once you have the high level plan, you have to go back because the conversations. Need to go deep around the vision that was just created. So we just have a vision. Uh, statement, we have a mission statement and we have core values, graduate profile skills, profile of a caring adult. We have to break it apart so that everybody understands every word of that vision statement. So this is process that we'll use. As a learning community where we build consensus on each one of these items. For instance, in a previous district. There was a instructional vision statement, we create and cultivate a safe environment of respect and rapport. Where instruction is intentional, engaging, challenging and accessible for all students. So that was in the high level plan. The next level of work was, okay, well, let's now sit down with. Everyone in the organization, let's talk about what does it mean when we say safe? What does it mean when we say create or cultivate? And you build consensus by going through this process. Of asking these questions to everyone. Everyone gets to participate in the process. So imagine doing that with not just the vision statement, but you do it with the mission. The core values and you make statements out of that and you build consensus. And then also you look at the graduate profile skills. And you really break those apart. You look at the core values. Because one important piece that I keep sharing is. These are not core values that I thought of. These are core values or vision statement that we. Thought of. So we are going to have to break this apart together. There are core values, um, and other statements that we've shared and we have to build. A common understanding of those core values. And, um, making sure that there's agreement and consensus. So can we go out of that document and go back? So this is a big part of the next level of work. Again, why I want to reiterate that we are just at the beginning stages. Uh, of presenting a high level plan to the board. I know the board may have, uh, a number of questions, but again, this is a high level plan. The second step for us is to sit down as a staff and determine the how. So again, when we're going through the strategic planning process. You build consensus around, here's the mission statement and vision statement, core values, graduate profile skills. Profile of a, uh, caring adult. But the real question is. How do we get to that vision? How do we make sure that we're implementing the mission? So these are conversations that really belong with staff or we sit down with all of our organization. We have these conversations and we develop these plans. So one of the things I've shared with you that's unique about our. Strategic plan is that you'll see that throughout we have embedded other plans. Like our communication plan, like our technology plan. Like our literacy plan as well. And our academic plan also, all of these are plans. That we have to sit down together and make sure. That we are, that we have elements in there, that we're going to get to our vision statement and implementing our mission statement as well. So I wanted to just share with you that there's a lot of work to do around the how. And then the next step that I see is. Once we do this work around unpacking. Once we do the work around the how we get there. Then we bring these plans back to the board of trustees for feedback. So that's what I wanted to share with you that you'll see in our strategic plan. I'm sure there's a lot of questions and we're here to entertain your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Ms. Munoz, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Okay, board, format, we're going to ask, uh, three questions. Um, about the strategic plan, uh, then we're going to move into comments. We're going to do two-minute comments, then Dr. Hurst is actually going to get a chance, uh, just for this item to, uh, make comments according to what he hears. And then I'm going to allow the board to do a one-minute rebuttal if they want to share something else. After hearing each other and or hearing Dr. Hurst's response to maybe your own comments since it's an important item. Um, who would like to get us started with the three, there are three questions if there are any. Okay, trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody for your work and, uh, I have a completely different vision of. What a strategic plan should look like. So I just want to preface that. And say that, uh, you know, I have something completely different or in mind, um, in terms of. The way it's set up, but to start with, the plan doesn't seem to adequately. Express the dire state of education, both nationally and in our district. A lot of these things are not things that were caused by the WCCUSD, but education finds itself in a precarious state. And it's not clear to me what is being done or what will be written in. To address dire threats of declining enrollment, attendance rate reported at eighty-eight percent, chronic absenteeism.
Trustee Reckler, sorry. Do you have a question? We are in questions right now. Okay.
Um, stagnant literacy math improvements, alarming subgroup graduation rates. Below state average college and career attainment, persistent teacher vacancies, declining enrollment and attendance rate. Resulting in very, very serious fiscal challenges. What are the strategies that are going to be baked in to address these very dire threats?
Thank you for your question, uh, trustee Reckler. Um, we did receive that question as well. And we see that all of those falling in the area. Um, of relentless attention to achievement, agency and access in that section. Or within one of those plans, especially, um, the academic plan, um, that we have. And toward the instructional focus plan that we have as well. Um, that will be embedded within the strategic plan. So as you look at goal number three. There is, uh, room for actions where those issues around especially academic performance can fall into that. Um, and then also as you look at the instructional focus plan, which will be. Um, an extensive document that's attached to the strategic plan will answer those questions as well. But I think as I shared, that's still a part of the work for staff to do. And that's the how do we get there? One of the things I didn't, uh, uh, highlight is under the SWOT analysis, the SWOT analysis covers everything that you just said. Uh, trustee Reckler, around all of our, our weaknesses and our threats to our system. Um, you mentioned chronic absenteeism. Um, you mentioned, uh, academic achievement as well. Those will find itself in either goal number three or one of the plans that I shared.
Thank you. Um, students have voiced dissatisfaction with the current academic system, particularly a lack of consistent engagement. And learning without it seeming meaningful. Why do I need to know this? You know, when will, when will I ever use this? How do you, and I had the same questions when I was in high school. How do you specifically intend to change the educational program, teaching and learning? So that students are more connected to their outcomes and being involved in their education.
Thank you for that question. And I saw you sent that to us as well. I think. Um, I've been really clear since I've been here around, uh, just priorities. And those priorities will need to be baked into, um, I would say the instructional focus plan. So. I've been very clear around what happens inside the classroom. And we can't, can't keep doing the same thing that we have been doing. Um, and get different results. I know we've been stagnant for more than a decade. So you've heard me talk about, um, inquiry-based learning, uh, pre-K through twelve. Um, on what do those opportunities look like, not just in high school and middle school, but in elementary school. Those conversations have been had with our CTE director, then Dr. Huey, and also Summer Sigler. We're trying to change the way we engage with our students, the whole system. We're trying to transform the way that we teach and how our students are learning. So one of the pieces that I've been very clear on is around pathways aligned to industry sectors. And then the other piece is around early literacy as well. And those conversations have been had. And then there's other pieces that I've been sharing with staff that all of this, when we sit down and we look at the instructional focus plan, those items will need to be baked inside the instructional focus plan.
And then finally, can you give the board a timeline on just, can you give us a timeline?
Yes, when I look at unpacking everything, so you see that we have several elements. And sitting down with the entire organization and having these conversations, it's gonna be extensive. I will say I can't give you a timeline without sitting down and talking with the team. I think I could better share with the board, maybe after talking with the team and kind of thinking through everything, because we would need to really look at every level of the organization. And it's not just the vision statement and mission statement. It's all those other pieces as well. So if you give me the opportunity to meet with the team, we can construct a timeline, a realistic timeline, and bring that back to the board. And we could have that at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then I have some comments when the time is for comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to trustee Christian and then President Smith Folds.
Excuse me. Yes, thank you for the, Dr. Hurst, for the presentation this evening. And thank you for the staff who helped and everybody played a part. I just want to ask, you know, based on innovation, based on how student interest, when they come to school, they not decided. So how are we gonna spark that excitement to get them moving from, from K to high school?
So as I was just sharing, I believe student engagement is a big piece of that. And I'll just share with you an experience that I've had where I've seen students disengage, but then transitioning to inquiry based learning where they become fully engaged. And this, there's this experience that's called a Think a Bit Lab Experience. And it's put on by Qualcomm, which is similar to either Apple or Google. And what happens is you take students from a regular classroom setting and you teach them how to be, in a very short amount of time, how to be scientists, engineers, mathematicians. And you put them in groups of four and you give them breadboards, Arduino's, LEDs, wiring, and you teach them basic coding. And you give them this opportunity to have components like a maker space where they have different objects. And you share with them in your team, we want you to collaborate and communicate with one another. And you're creating this electronic device that either blinks or walks or something just on basic skill that you learned within an hour, hour and a half, two hours. And I have seen students work together and come alive and they are collaborating. They're creative, they're communicative with one another. That's what I'm talking about transforming our system. And the students become naturally engaged in that type of inquiry based process. So we're trying to create a system where it's not just middle school and high school that's doing that type of learning. It's the entire system. You walk into a K, a kindergarten classroom, and they're coding. They're doing basic coding. They're doing STEM related projects as well. So it's really about student engagement and how we're engaging with the students, which is really why I've been pushing inquiry based learning.
Yeah. All right. Thank you on that one. Appreciate that. The next one will be, let me ask you this. Would you consider like having like a mission statement, you know, for students to kind of recite, you know, positive reinforcement, you know, every day, you know, getting pumped up? Have you considered that in your strategic plan?
Well, I would say that the students were a big part of the mission statement that was created already. But if you're talking about affirmation statements, when you start a school day, then there's something positive that you're saying. That's something that can be done, but that's really left up to our site principals. That's something that I could do at the district level. But really, the school site leaders are responsible for aligning themselves with the strategic plan and coming up with those affirmation statements for our students. But it certainly can be done.
Okay. And then as we go into the next school year, as we look down the road, how do we see ourselves implementing some of this in the fall?
So that's a big part of the work when we talk about unpacking. And I should say, a big part of the work going into next year is what elements of the strategic plan can we invest in during the summer? So we come back ready for the opening of school and we're implementing or we're operationalizing or socializing certain components. We won't be able to socialize everything, but there's certain things that we will be able to implement going into next year. So that is our work during the summer. And we already have lined up doing that work and how we're gonna implement going into the new school year.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. President Smith Folds?
Dr. Hurst, the strategic plan is a living document, correct?
Yes, it is.
Do you foresee that it comes back to the board in several increments to tell us what you're keeping, editing, what you are adding to the document? Do you foresee that happening several times?
It actually will happen. And really, it's a collaboration, it's by board direction. We certainly will need to come back and share, say, for instance, the work that we're doing with unpacking the vision, coming back and share with you what the consensus is. So every level will have to come back and share with you just to get feedback. They were moving in a direction according to the board. So absolutely, that's gonna happen.
And my final question is, Dr. Hurst, how is this strategic, strategic plan being used in every other department or every other project, every other thing that we're doing with the district? I know that you're aligning it with the board's anti-racist statement. Are you also aligning it with our LCAP? Are you also aligning it with, can you speak to a couple of those things, please?
Absolutely. So this is certainly a big deal for the district. It is a guiding document. All of our conversations are gonna be based around, you know, once the board gives feedback and approval, it's guided around this document. So everything is around the strategic plan. Every conversation, alignment of resources. When we have our executive cabinet meetings, it has to be based around the concepts and ideas in the strategic plan. Are we moving toward our vision and how do we know? And we're measuring that. One of the things I will say about the LCAP process, I was excited to see Ms. Neely Johnson and others as well, leading that process and the alignment between the strategic plan and the LCAP goals as well. So there, there's consistency and there's alignment in that. So everything is about what's in our strategic plan and our LCAP at this point.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Okay, we are now going to move to comments. So if you'd please put up the two minute clock. Who would like to get started with comments? Does anyone have comments about on this side? Trustee Reckler, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for your work so far. In my opinion, looking at the plan right now, to me, it seems to confuse goals with strategies. The goals for any K-12 system in California are given to you by the state, and it's all in the dashboard. It's increasing your student achievement through literacy, numeracy, English language learning proficiency, graduation rate, college career readiness. And most districts add, you know, a graduate profile, which is social emotional skills or interpersonal skills, you know, the other skills that you need to function in life. Everything else is a strategy to achieving those student centered goals. Why do you have teachers to increase student achievement? And why do you have an anti-racist statement that stood, you know, advanced student achievement? Everything is about student achievement. So my recommendation is that those goals get moved to the top of the document. I mean, right now, I find them on in, in the fifties. And that should be the top. And then everything else under it should support those goals. I think that you do need some pillars. And I gave you a document that like kind of pulled out some big pillars of what supports this work. Dr. Hurst, I'm happy to share it with the board because I think it's really important. And I think that Los Angeles Unified School District has a really great plan about the way that they set out their work. And they actually have student goals, very aggressive, but they've actually got stuff there. So those are things that I recommend. I also think that the board should have a study session on this and not just be limited to three questions. I mean, I think we should actually have time to talk about this. And I think that's all I have for this round. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have comments? President Smith Folds?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Hurst, and thank you to your team for working on the strategic plan. I think because this is a living document, I think that we have to keep saying that because you are never going to stop getting opinions about this document, which is not a bad thing. As long as you are very clear in your intent, which I think you are, is to continue to go to the community and say, look at where we are. Look at what we're doing. Here's our roadmap and our navigational tool to get us to where we want to be. I think that's the point of a strategic plan, is to be something of a roadmap. Like this is what, if we do this, then this will occur. So I think that your staff did a very good job with that. I do want to suggest that everyone continue to take a deep dive into the strategic plan. And you are always open to having questions. And your staff is always open to answering questions about the strategic plan and many other things that come up. So for the community and for the board, ask those questions and they will come back to us because you're committed to doing that. So I appreciate that from you and your staff. When you do, not only answering these questions, but the other thousands of things that you guys do in the district. So we appreciate you taking time to keep the board abreast about what's happening and what the strategic plan will look like. Thank you for your work. Again, I am complete. Oh, no, I'm not. I want to make sure that when we are talking about the strategic plan, that we are staying grounded in who we want to be. So I think that that's very important. And when we're looking at it, we're looking at who we want to be if we do X, Y, and Z. This will get us to where we want to be. I'm complete.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. So for my comments, first of all, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you to your staff and thank you, everybody in the community who's been involved. I actually really like how you guys created the goals and the strategies. It actually mirrors the way Common Core standards are, which I think will be a good thing because we want to reflect what is being done in the classroom. So your strategic plan actually does that, which is good. I really look forward to the next stage, which kind of will set the parameters for how we'll achieve those strategies, which is really what I, what I, you know, really look forward to the next piece. But this was, I think, essential for us to kind of frame the root, right? Or where our heart is, or, you know, specifically what President Smith will share too. So I definitely, you know, want to see or would love to see in the next stage or in the third stage, wherever this falls, like, how does this translate to the classroom, right? When we walk into the classroom, how am I going, how am I going to look for our goals? Just the way that I walk into a classroom and look for Common Core standards, right? So I would love to see just like a page just around this, how this, all this translates into our schools, right? Just so that, you know, we get that deeper dive. And as we visit schools, as we, you know, principals walk into classrooms, right? They have that in mind. Because otherwise, you know, we're just putting money and time into a document that ultimately won't get used for the purpose that it should, right? So I really look forward to those next stages. And I understand this is just the first of many, right? So, and I agree, I do, I do think it needs the involvement of all of our stakeholders, right? Because it's not just us who should say what a classroom should look like, right? So thank you so much. Okay, so now, Dr. Hurst, you get a few minutes to respond. If you like or share anything that, you know, was said. And then the board will get one minute after that as well to, to share more thoughts if they hear something different. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, all of you, for your feedback and your comments. I will just share the uniqueness about our strategic plan, which is why I opened up and I shared examples. I've seen many examples of strategic plans. I've seen LA Unified's strategic plan as well and their pillars. And when you look at those strategic plans, they're different. Some of them have five pages, eleven pages. Some of them have sixty pages. What's really unique about our plan is we approach this from our current reality to our ideal state point of view. So we're looking at our equity audit findings. What did the findings say that our gaps are in the district? So what we felt like as a staff is we could not ignore that and we had to address those findings, which why it made sense for us for that to be our goal. And we went round and round about this, but landed on if these are our gaps, then we have to address these gaps. Now, I will say, we still have to pay attention to everything else that was said. Trustee Reckler laid out some really good points. It's contained within our squad analysis, declining enrollment, lack of real world preparation of facilities. There's a number of different things that are in our squad analysis that have to be addressed. What I've shared as well is that there is something else unique about our plan that we're sharing with the board, is that we have several other plans that's gonna be attached to it that provides that detail. So when I think about our instructional focus plan, that is a plan that's gonna deal with our literacy and mathematics and our lack of achievement in those areas. And then when I think of relentless attention to achievement agency and access, I think of some of those other issues as well and systems and structures. Where does facilities fit in? So maybe we have to look at the action steps there. So what I'm saying is, we believe that we have the right goals because it was co-created with staff. It's not just superintendent's goals. And it made sense for us to start with the equity audit and to make those our goals. But we're very clear that what's in the squad analysis, what's been shared, it will be captured. And we'll be sharing this back with the board. But we believe that this is an excellent plan.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Okay, board, we're gonna get one minute if there's anything else that you'd like to add, especially after hearing Dr. Hurst. So if we could put up the clock, I'd appreciate it. And then trustee Reckler, you can be the first one to start us.
Thank you. I just have one other brief thing, which is that I absolutely believe that strategies need to have goals, if that makes sense. Strategies absolutely need to have goals. But to me, all of the equity audit work- all of the equity audit work were strategies to improve student achievement, which is the goal. So I think that I think there just needs to be some reorganization, maybe in what's already done on paper. But I I just want to be clear on that point. Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that like to add anything? Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. Uh, we're gonna move to our next item. Um, which is a a project update for Kennedy High School Modernization Project. Uh, the next two items are what I would consider lengthy. So it is nine forty-one, so I'm gonna ask for a motion in order to extend our meeting so that we can listen to the last three items because we do have to uh, accept the annual, or we have to listen to the annual financial audit. Uh, right, Ms. Dr. Moses, is that right? Which is the item F four? Yes, okay, yes. Don't worry, I got a confirmation from Dr. Hurst. Uh, so I'm gonna motion to extend the meeting until eleven thirty. Which I really hope we don't have to stay till eleven thirty, but, um, that should hopefully give us enough time to go through. Uh, let me amend like my, my, my motion. I move that we stay till eleven thirty. Or until we finish discussion items and the consent items pulled by trustee Reckler.
Smith Folds.
Okay, let's move. Actually, without objection, we'll adopt the change. So adopted. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay, uh, Mr. Freeze, I believe that this is your item passed to you. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we're very excited to bring forward the updates on Richmond High and Kennedy projects. Uh, we have Mrs. Mahia Hooper with us this evening to help facilitate that, and we are have our architects from HKID, Jeff Evans and Jesse Miller from DLR. So I'll turn it over to Ellen.
Good evening, boards, superintendent, staff and community. Uh, we are very pleased tonight to be able to come forward with the, uh, design approach for Kennedy High School. Uh, we have been working, uh, since last November, when you last saw us, uh, to be able to come forward tonight with these uh, different options that we've presented to community and staff. And have now moving forward, um, with a preferred option uh, to be able to, uh, set the standard for where we're going with these designs. Uh, and so tonight, uh, as Mr. Freeze referred to, we have Jeff Evans with us from HKIT Architects to, uh, present the progress to date. Uh, and I'd also like to reach out and give a special thanks to the Kennedy families and, uh, staff who participated in the process thus far.
Thank you, Lewis, and thank you, Ellen. Um, on behalf of the whole HKIT team, I'm really happy to be here to share with you what we've been collaborating on with the Kennedy High School community. Uh, next slide. As Ellen mentioned, we wanted to check back in on the vision that this Kennedy community, uh, put forth to you in November. Thank you. Um, and we are, one of the big messages is that we are still in alignment with a vision that the Kennedy community, as well as the board, uh, selected. The major parts of this vision included removing the hundred, two hundred building along cutting and replacing that with a new building. That also included the administration and the health, uh, as well. We have the new student center, which includes the performing arts component, as well as the eating component that's located right there on the K. And then renovations of other buildings on the campus, as well as the new fieldhouse component and new fields on the back of the campus. So this was the vision from November twenty twenty-three. Fast forward to the slide you see here, and you still see that vision. Uh, we'll just note that the building on cutting is two story, and so you've seen your plan there, the second story pulled down to the bottom. And then those are the general education classrooms that are new admin and health there. Um, one comment on the, um, student centers, we're calling it. You may have previously heard it termed the cafeteria. Uh, we feel the term student center is more reflective of the nature of the building, but also that it also includes a classroom that can be used for the leadership class, and so it becomes a real hub uh, for the students during the school day, but also for the community in the evenings. Next slide. Um, so we wanted to spend a little time talking to you about this building uh, and sharing what it looks like both for performance, as you see on the screen. Um, to orient you on the plan there on the left, the yellow box is the kitchen. And then we see in the middle, um, the multifunctional space, and it's flexible, and that's really important. Uh, concerning the resources that we put in the spaces that have something that can be used not only for lunch, but at other times during the school day and the evenings and weekends. And so the picture is not our project, but it shows the seats, uh, telescoping seating extended with nice chairs for you to sit in. At the front of the room, we have two fixed rows of seating that have an operable partition that can separate those two fixed rows of seating from the stage. And we have a proper full-sized stage that can accommodate a performance, instruments, or, uh, drama. And so we can also have two things going on in the room at once. We can have the big room, or we can close the partitions and have a smaller, more intimate assembly. So mention the red box is a classroom that can double as a, uh, backstage space during performance or serve the leadership, uh, student leadership class, and then, of course, backstage. Next slide. So then the room transforms when we push the bleachers in, and we can bring out the tables. Uh, we have space on the left side there uh, for tables that open out onto the K. And this was a really big part of why this was picked, why this vision was picked, and we've been able to stay true to it, was to have that connection to bring eating onto the K, uh, have the indoor-outdoor connection there. And then, of course, we have spaces for the tables to go when the bleachers are out. Um, next slide. Um, so we wanted to share, as Ellen mentioned, uh, conceptual design approaches two options that we've been developing with the steering committee, as well as the community. It's important to note that this is a starting point that we're in schematic design, and so that we have the the general outline. We know where the parts and pieces go. We have a sense of how we want things to look. But over the course of developing the design and putting together construction documents, it's quite possible that certain elements and how they look might get refined a little bit. We go forward, next slide. Uh, when we met with you in November, there was four really important goals, and those have continued to guide the project. You know, things like safe and secure campus are things that we've achieved through both options in terms of how we're locating the admin and having control on people that come and go from the campus. But the other parts of this I wanted to highlight for you are promoting health and wellness, supportive learning environments. So what's really important is that we have classrooms and learning spaces that reflect the best current thinking. That includes having windows and windows that open. Um, but the other word I wanted to pick up on was inspirational. And so not only does Kennedy want and deserve, again, the best current thinking educational environments, but they want something that's aspirational and inspirational, something that they can have pride in. Next slide. So with those goals, we continue to engage, um, with the Kennedy High School community. Uh, we've gone to also the middle school, the theater school. Uh, we've done uh, tabling during lunchtimes. We've met with classes. We've met with teachers, uh, and continue to work on the vision. Next slide. Um, what you see here is one of the pieces of that engagement, and we did what we call a visual preference survey. And again, knowing that they wanted something inspirational, we put forth some images, and we drew out some important conclusions from, again, that we put these boards up at lunch for students to put dots on the vote. Um, we had them at the community and steering committee meetings. And what we found is that, one, there was a big entrance in a, in a building that was contemporary, that was looking forward as opposed to looking backward. Two, that the entry and the main entry was the place where they wanted to see the identity of the Kennedy School expressed. Uh, and also they wanted windows. And so if we go to the next slide, we developed these two conceptual design approaches, and the first one, the next slide, uh, you can see the imagery there, uh, really develops a bold red cavity that picks up on the Kennedy red. And that element can be seen from, uh, both the east and the west, and it marks the entry, but also welcomes you to Kennedy. There are some elements that are in common with this option one and option two, and I'll just take a minute to highlight some of those. We know that the the wall of the hundred, two hundred building now is this two-story blank mass, and so it was really important in both of these options to have something that some variety, some interest, uh, some warmth and some welcomingness, and so we have one and two-story components to it. Uh, if we go to the next slide, um, this is the second option, and this is really inspired by the Kennedy High School Eagle mascot. And if we go to the next slide, we see a form that, uh, shields and protects that entry, and that's in the form of the eagle wing, but also is aspirational, inspirational, that it sort of rises up as it meets that corner. We go to the next slide. When we engaged with the steering committee members, as well as the community, uh, this second option emerged as the preferred option, and we shared with you some of the reasons there. And I think as we reflect on what we see, it kind of boils down to that inspirational line that I mentioned from back in November, that the Kennedy High School community really wanted something that was unique to their school, a feature of the building that wasn't on a different building, but was also really unique and celebrated that uniqueness of Kennedy. Uh, and hence, this option two becomes a preferred option with the eagle's wing and soaring eagles. Next slide. Okay, that's it.
And that concludes our presentation. We are here for any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Menos, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, does anyone have questions? Trustee Reckler, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I do have a question on costing on these two options with the facade. Do either of these options allow or disallow an auxiliary gym? Like, would you put it be putting money into a expensive facade at the expense of an auxiliary gym?
Both these options are similar in cost.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, President Smith Folds.
When you talk about the, um, student center space that you said, and then you said there's a back room to that, that's going to be used for like backstageing. How much detail have you taken into account? Things like dressing rooms or things like if Vapa is there using their instruments, that what the instrument's going to, the sound, how the sound is going to, um, how the sound is going to be heard in that room, like Vapa has musicians have certain things that they have in a music room to make sure that the sound is the way it's supposed to be. If you're doing a dance performance or a theater performance, then you have changing rooms for the actors or the dancers. How much of that has been taken into account when you're creating this back room that's going to be used for backstage?
Great question. Thank you. Um, to answer, the backstage area is designed as you would a performing arts center or a theater. Uh, in that we have a stage, and that stage, as well as the house, are acoustically isolated from the rooms that surround it. Uh, but as per the district program, we also include the theatrical component. So if you look at some of those kind of dark blue rooms that are on the, uh, bottom right, and as I look at it, uh, we have the prop storage, and we have the costume storage, we have piano storage, we have a green room that has the two, uh, changing rooms. We have restrooms. Um, and then to augment or give more flexibility for even more performers, we added a, we moved the classroom out of the hundred, two hundred and put it on this building. Uh, again, thinking student leaders could be use it, but also there was more space for performers backstage. Uh, and so we do have, excuse me, we do have all of the sort of components that the district would have on a regular, uh, theater. If I can just go inside the house for a second, we will also have acoustic treatments inside that, um, large room that doubles as a eating space, as well as a performing arts space that will give you a quality experience for someone in the audience as well.
My second question is to piggyback off what you just said, that includes stage lights, that includes, um, where they do the music or where they would have music done if they're doing a stage performance, like the back part of it. Okay. That's my second question. So you said, yes, I saw your head go up and down.
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, my last question on this, um, ticket booth, you have a place where a ticket booth inside or outside to take tickets for performances, stuff like that?
That's a really good question. We are intending to pivot to the digital future and not have a ticket booth. Uh, we will, of course, have places in the lobby to display, uh, but we're not having, at least not planning to have a ticket booth, and instead use, use the phones.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm completing, um, Claire Gonzalez.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much for your presentation and the designs. My question is also on the student center. Um, I like the flexibility of being able to have a stage and having a dining area. Uh, but could you explain to me, uh, where are the tables stored, and then how would they come in and out of that storage? Thank you.
Really, really good question. Uh, if we go to that image, which is the next slide, um, we can see this is set up, this has tables for two hundred, and so we can see how many tables there are both in the left corner and in the main room. Uh, and then we see a gray mass that's kind of just up above where the tables are. And one of the rooms inside that gray mass is table stores, and so we can fold up these tables and and pivot them into that room. The other thing that we've done, um, again, flexibility, you know, you, a cafeteria wants lots of light and windows. And so we have this left corner that has garage doors that open and roll up to the quad, but on the flip side, when you're doing a performance, you don't want lots of light. So we're gonna have another partition that can close off that space, still allowing the exit door, but just close off where those, uh, garage doors are. And so we have the ability to push some tables into that area, uh, as well.
Thank you. Um, okay, that was my last question. So we'll move to comments. Um, if we could put up the two minute, please. And we'll start with, uh, trustee Reckler. See your hand. Go ahead.
Thank you. So both designs look gorgeous. Um, I just want, uh, to be mindful with with students, with everyone that, you know, there is the hope that an auxiliary gym gets built. And so if it ever comes up, do you want this beautiful eagle wing, or do you want auxiliary gym that those options are, you know, put forward? Um, this, this, the, um, and then my second is just a comment that, um, probably can't be answered now, but when this presentation came in November, there was a motion that we were going to get up, um, an update on Stige, and that was supposed to come in May, and we don't have that tonight along with the other presentations, so I'm just hoping that could come forward quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, Presidents and Folds?
Um, thank you so much for the presentation. I just want us to continue to be mindful about the community that we're serving and make sure that we're giving our one hundred percent, which I think that you're doing a good, really good job of. Fran, I'm gonna have to squint to see an eagle wing, so like, I didn't get it until you said it, but I was like, all right, cool, there's an eagle wing. Uh, I would like a big old eagle up there, but that's just me. I'm a very visual person. Um, but once you said it, I was like, all right, I got it. Um, so that's just something to think about. Um, also, when we're doing the student center, if we don't want it to be a cafagematorium, then we're gonna have to make sure that it's not, right? We're gonna have to make sure that we are clear about it's flexible for a reason. And there's an intention behind that to give more with such a small space, so that's why we're doing it. Uh, when it comes to the chairs and the tables, I would just make sure that they're like on risers or rolling because nobody's gonna be pulling us up in and out. That's a lot, right? So you want to make sure that it's done easily as possible, and it's, um, anybody can do it. I'm complete.
Thank you. Um, for my comments, I mean, I agree with my colleagues I've said, I, they look beautiful, and I'm really excited for the future of the school and the students. I love the windows. I love the colors. Um, and with that said, you know, I think that if we can squeeze every dollar as much as we can, um, I think that we need to learn from past experiences, right? And I think that, um, you know, Pinole Valley High School, it looks very nice, but it has really, like, it really hurts me to think that this might be really, like, it really hurts me to think that this might become one of those because that's a money pit that we just have to have to put money and money and money in. So I want us to hopefully squeeze those dollars as much as we can for everything. And I think that was my first reaction when I saw the eagle wing. It's like, to trustee Reckler, how much is that gonna cost us, right? And could that actually pay for something else, right? So, so it looks beautiful, right? And I love the, the vision behind it. But could that pay for, you know, an additional classroom or whatever, right? So I, I, I think that those questions will be asked as they should be asked by community, and I just want us to be really thoughtful about, you know, every dollar we spend here. Actually, I know that, you know, our staff is being, but and then I also, you know, the reason why I asked about the tables and chairs, because the same thing that President Smith Fols talked about, which is we're already on their staff. That's just the reality of our schools. If we have to have custodians go in and out, move tables and chairs, right? Like, it's going to become difficult very, very quickly for that space to actually be used for where we're intending it to be used. So the easiest we can make it on staff for that space to be transformed, the better for me, because otherwise, you know, we're gonna pay for it in the long run in staffing issues, right? So, but otherwise, apart from that, I'm just really excited for the design. Thank you. Board, okay, now we're gonna move to the next item, which is Richmond High School. So I'll pass to you, Mr. Freeze.
Yes, Ms. Mahia Hooper will introduce Jesse.
Hello, good evening again. We are also equally excited about the Richmond High Project. There's a lot of fun features in this design approach as well. We had similar process that included staff and community and teachers within the school. And I again would like to send out a special thanks to the Richmond families and community that participated in our process and hopefully continue to choose to show up and show out for our, our process, because this is still early in the design stage. And so I'm pleased to bring forward Jesse Miller, who is from DLR, who will be presenting the design option tonight.
Good evening. Thank you, board and trustees. So as, as Ms. Hooper said, we're here to present Richmond. The last time we were here on November eighth, we presented two pre-design options. One was called the Plaza Scheme, the other one, the Promenade Scheme. At that November eighth board meeting, what, what was decided by the board was to figure out how to combine the benefits of both of the options into one. So that's basically where we took the starting point from November eighth to now. If we go to the next slide, what you see here is the current layout. It takes the two, well, it takes all of the benefits that we outlined in the previous presentation that we presented to you on November, November eighth, and marries the two options together. So what you'll notice is the mall space is removed with a giant outdoor courtyard. That was part of that Plaza Scheme. The, the new addition is along Twenty Third Street, which is really part of that Promenade Scheme. It removes the necessity, the way that we've done this for the interim housing, which was a big component of, of the board of saving that money on interim housing costs. And so we found a way to essentially marry the, the best of both worlds of the two options we presented on November eighth. Next slide. So this is what the overall site plan looks like, as again, we've got a combination of new construction and modernization. The modernization of the existing buildings is highlighted in red. The new construction portions is outlined in blue. What you'll see is we've got a new drop-off visitor parking along Twenty Third Street. We've got secondary entrances and primary entrances to the school site, creating a safe and secure campus. We have a separate staff entrance all the way to the south of campus for that staff parking lot. And then we start to create those central courtyards, art and music plazas around between the new construction and the existing to really tie the two together. Next slide. So when we started out way back in May of last year and met with thousands of people throughout the Richmond community, we determined five design priorities through all those combinations, conversations and workshops. Those five priorities are listed there. They will remain. They are the pillars of this design for Richmond because that was what was brought to us by the community. Since the November eighth board meeting, a lot's taken place at Richmond. We've had two, a two-day workshop on January twenty-third, twenty-fourth with the staff and students continuing to build activities and excitements for this project. We went to an all-staff meeting on Valentine's Day. We've had two steering community, committee meetings, again, another community meeting just a few weeks ago, April twenty-fifth. So lots of input and continue to build this school for Richmond and the community. We also issued out a district-wide survey that we had a about a hundred and, at a hundred and thirty-eight at this time, I think eventually about a hundred and sixty people took the survey throughout the community. And we asked them things about what they'd like to see. What would they like the style of architecture to be for Richmond High School? What types of materials they'd like to see? What's the glazing and glass? Because we know glass is a big item and, and how they wanted that to see. And so we captured those results. And the results were very telling for us because it was pretty unanimous that they wanted a modern-looking building, but they wanted varied options of glazing and varied options of materials. So that's what you'll see in the three options we produced. So next, so this was massing option one. We call it massing option because we're nowhere near finished. As Ms. Hooper stated, we're, we're still in the schematic design process. So we wanted to get a, this is basically kind of a look and feel, right? What could this look like? What types of materials could be presented? So this was massing option one. It presented three different views we show here of what the new additions and what the new campus of Richmond could look like. Next. Massing option two changed some of the materials, changed some of the colors that we presented. It, it, the architectural styles changed just a little bit with the, with the, the roofing outlines, but still reminiscent, we wanted, there's a few elements you'll see throughout the three options because they're just very important to the community as we went through a lot of the surveys, a lot of the meetings, a lot of the one-on-one interviews. And then massing option three was the final option. This one's a little bit more traditional with a modern twist still, but very traditional style architecture. And we wanted to provide three options that were completely kind of different from each other to get adequate community feedback. And so after the community meeting, steering committee meetings, meetings with the district, the preferred option to kind of move forward with from a massing and from a look and feel standpoint was option one. We had a quote on there from one of the community members about option one has the, the sharing of the culture representing the name of Richmond High School. So the look and feel, the materiality is really what we're going to explore and continue to explore throughout the schematic design phase. But that was the preferred option by the community. So thank you so much for, for your time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Munoz, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, does anyone have any questions? Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any material cost differences between all the options presented?
No, it's just the different colors and how you presented. The materials are very, very similar in price. We haven't gotten into the exact details of everything yet, but when you, when you talk about materiality on a wall surface, right, we have to build the wall regardless, right? So just, we're gonna choose cost-effective. The, the goal is really to put as many dollars as we can into the classrooms, into the spaces themselves, right? But still make a very attractive-looking building.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else.
President Smith Fols.
Tell me about the color or like there, like it looks very gray. And I see a little yellow, but I'm looking for the Richmond High School colors, which is a vibrant red and blue and white with the Oilers. Can you talk to me about the color that you chose?
Absolutely. We actually had different options during some of the community sessions where we did show the school colors of Richmond to the steering committee. And there was mixed reviews on, on, on whether or not to put the school colors on there. So for this option in particular, we were showing a more lighter, kind of steering away from the school red and blue school colors exactly. The red and blue school colors would be prominent more on the interior of the building as opposed to the exterior of the building. But again, we haven't dived fully into colors. That's why we presented the three options had so many different colors between them because we wanted to get the community feedback on what they were thinking from a color look and feel type of.
Thank you very much. Presser, Clark Gonzalez, I just have comments. I'm complete.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any questions, so we'll move to comments. Could you please put up the two-minute timer and trustee Reckler, you can get us started.
Great. So once again, thank you very much for your work. And option one, I mean, honestly, it looks like a modern art museum. I mean, it's really gonna stand out on Twenty Third Street. I mean, it's gonna, you're gonna be setting like a major standard there. But thank you for your work. And if that's what they like, I just have to remind you, there's no more money. That's it. There's no more bond money. We can't get a bond. We can't. That's it. So, you know, you gotta work with what you got. Thank you.
President Smith Fols.
Thank you so much for your hard work and thanks for the presentation. I, I'm not trying to get you to make it look like Boca Raton or Miami, but it does need a little color. Like, we're gonna have to, like, something. It looks, it looks a little dry, Fran. So if we could add some color, that would be lovely. I think it's a pretty building. Like, I think the whole thing is pretty, but color, little, little razzmatazz would be great. I'm complete. I don't think that's a word, Fran, razzmatazz. I'm complete.
Thank you. So yeah, thank you for all the time you spent with our community and the designs. I love the sign option one, so I was glad to see that that was a preferred option. I, so I really like the concrete look. And I think that why I like it is because it reminds me of like a Hispanic architecture, which I think is maybe why a lot of the students in this community like the highest school with a lot of Latino students, right? So I think that's why it resonated with me because it reminded me ironically to a university in Mexico City that has similar design. So I, I love it, if you don't get that, if you don't hear that from my comments. But I also agree, and it goes back to the comment about Kennedy High School, right? I mean, like, whatever we can spread to make sure the classrooms are nice, right? I can live without the concrete outside beautiful design, right? As long as, you know, kids have everything they need inside. But if we can, you know, do it with the money we have, then that'd be great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, board, we're going to now move to our last item, F four, and I believe Ms. Moses, this is your item.
Yes, thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Good evening, board. This evening, we're coming before you to ask that you receive our annual financial audit for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We have Michael Ash, who's going to be promoted as a panelist representing Christie White and Associates, and he's going to present the independent audit report for our district. Our district's financial position, internal control and federal and state compliance for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Staff is requesting that the audit report be approved and accepted into the record. And I'll pass it on to Michael Ash if he's on the call.
And I, I do apologize. I called you a Ms. Moses, Dr. Moses. So I apologize for that.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Hi, I'm a Michael Ash, partner with Chrissy White, and I'm here to present the twenty-two, twenty-three annual audit report. I'm going to share, I have just a quick presentation to go through. See, can everybody see that okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. So here to present the audit, typically, this audit would be due to the state December fifteenth and then presented to the board January thirty-first. The district did have to get an audit extension to April thirtieth. And so that's why we're here in May instead of in January. And that was just due to some key people from the district leaving. Some of the people that provided a lot of our audit documentation left, so it just took a while to, to get some of the information that we needed to finish the audit. But overall, I think the audit results are very positive. Definitely, probably some of the best that I've seen since I've been a partner on this audit. And I just have a few slides to share, and then I'll answer any questions that you might have. So the first section, this is the financial audit. So this is the audit on the financial statements themselves. It's an unmodified opinion. That means that in our opinion, these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. So that's the best opinion that you can have, and that's, that's exactly what you want. The next report that we have is internal control over financial reporting. So this is, every school district audit has to be done under what's called a government auditing standards. And that means that if we come across anything that we deem to be a material weakness or significant deficiency in internal controls of our financial reporting, it gets reported as an audit finding. We did have one significant deficiency related to financial reporting, and that was just because we had two audit adjustments. One was the, the LRE, the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. This was a common adjustment that we had to make, and it's because the CDE put out some guidance after a lot of districts had closed, changing the allocation amounts. And so the, there was an adjustment needed to, to get the, get the financial statements to, for the learning, the LRE grant to where they should be. And then there was just one voided check that wasn't, one check that wasn't voided timely in the building fund. It was voided after year end, but it caused expenditures and accounts payable to be too high. So for twenty twenty-three, so there was an audit adjustment there too. Federal compliance, and, and I know this was the, the past regime, Dr. McIntyre was really focused on getting this federal compliance, the time certifications, that type of thing in order, and we saw some definite improvements here. So because the, the district spends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year in federal money, we have to do what's called a single audit. And there are certain programs that we have to test based on their size and certain compliance requirements that we look at. So happy to say unmodified opinion here, no significant deficiencies and no material weaknesses. And then finally, state compliance. So every year, there's a state audit guide that comes out, procedures they ask us to look at, everything from attendance, instructional time, anytime, anytime there's a new fund, funding source, they always want us to look at that too. So we did give an unmodified opinion. We did have two findings, one on classroom teacher salaries. And this finding has been really common. There's a percentage that districts have to meet for classroom for teacher salaries. And since COVID, with all the, the one-time monies, a lot of districts have had issues meeting that threshold. So that finding is very common. And then the other finding is just a very small, minor instructional materials, public hearing has to be held before the eighth week of school. In this case, I think it was on a board agenda that would have been in compliance, and it ended up not happening that night. And so by the time it got, the public hearing was conducted, it was passed to the eight weeks. So that's all that I have for my slideshow. I'm going to stop the share here. And just a couple of general comments before I'll turn it over to you guys. I just want to thank everyone at the district. Kim Moses and her team, you know, Kim wasn't there for, for a lot of the audit year, but you know, we did work with her in a limited capacity after, and her team was fantastic. Margarita Romo was our audit contact is always great. Really, the facilities team chipped in this year too. I know there, we were trying to get some information, and I think one time I was on a call with like eight people. And everyone chipped in to try to get the audit items. So I really appreciate that. And all in all, a good audit result for And, um, all in all, uh, a good audit result for twenty-twenty-three. Again, it's, you're almost into twenty-four, twenty-five, so the results unfortunately aren't very timely. But, um, just want to thank you, everyone, and I'm happy to answer any question that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. We're gonna move to public comment first. Ms. Munoz, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Great, thank you. Um, now we're gonna move to questions from the board. Uh, we'll start with you, trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ash. Um, I just have a couple of things. The first one was, was there any repeat findings for, from, uh, June, I'm losing my voice. Were there any repeat findings, um, from the year-end six-twenty-two?
Uh, that, that classroom teacher salary one was a repeat finding, yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm aware of that one. The next one, if I could jump to the significant deficiency, do you think this is a one-off or do you think that there needs to be a process improvement or, um, anything along those lines?
I think it was a, the one-off just because of the, the nature of what the adjustments were. So the one, uh, like I said, it was common amongst a lot of the school districts that we audited. And then I think the voided check, if some of the personnel would have been in place at that time, I think that that check would have been voided more timely.
Okay, yeah, I'm not worried about a voided check. It's the, it's the, uh, the, the, you know, the block grant money.
Yeah, that, that was a very common, and it's, uh, the guidance came out very late. It was, I think, uh, late August or September and they changed the allocations. So, and then the CDE asked districts because they were gonna have to pay it back in the next year to create an accounts payable for it. And so a lot of districts had that finding. It wasn't just West Contra Costa.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, this one might be a, a bit of a curveball, but since I got the accountant here, you might know something about it. So last year I missed it, but this year I caught it. We're actually using some of our parcel taxes to pay for your audit, but it's not in our ballot language. Is that a problem?
If it's not in the ballot language, then yes, it should not be.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, we have not done the parcel tax audit for, um, la, the last two years either. We have not finished it. We have started it. We have not finished it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ash. Actually, I do have one question for you. Our labor partners have brought up one of the findings that you brought up, which is that we are not within the threshold of teacher pay. Um, the fifty-five percent or, you know, that percentage that you talked about. What is the, I mean, I know the negative effect for us locally, but what is the negative effect of us not reaching that percentage with the state or federal government?
Sure, um, nothing with the federal government. It's only state. So, um, and I recommended, you can get a waiver from the county office of education. Um, and if that waiver comes through and is approved, then there's no financial impact, um, to the district for that. There was a study that, that came out and, and I've seen it through, um, the COVID years. Before COVID, this was a very rare finding. We had a couple of really small districts that had a hard time meeting that ratio. With COVID and all the one-time, um, federal money for the ESER and all the, that thing, um, that really changed it. And I would say it's up to probably maybe a quarter of, of districts are not meeting that threshold through these COVID years.
Thank you. I appreciate.
You're welcome.
Okay, Board, now we're gonna move to comments. Does anyone have any comments on this item? Okay, I don't either, Mr. Ash. Thank you so much. Um, we appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too. And thank you, Dr. Moses. Sorry, just for my clarification, Dr. Moses, uh, you're requesting to be approved and accepted. Uh, I'm assuming that, cause obviously discussion, is, is it just accepted just because we listened to it? Is that, just to clarify, cause I, I can't remember from last year.
Yes, it has to be publicly presented and then the county has to be notified that it's been accepted.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So if, so if you will, I'll go ahead and, um, move that the board received and accepted the annual financial audit for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thank you.
I'll second if it needs a second.
Perfect. Then let's move to a vote. We'll start with you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
President Smith Foles.
Smith Foles, yes.
And I'm a yes as well, passes, uh, unanimously with those present. Thank you. Um, okay, so now we're gonna move to, uh, the consent items pulled. Uh, it was the five contracts from C eight. Trustee Reckler, would you like to just walk us one at a time?
Sure, thank you very much. So the first one is the Christie White one. And as I just asked the auditor, um, we have five thousand, six hundred dollars coming out of general fund slash parcel tax to pay for that. It's a small amount, but I haven't, I've never seen that before. And I went back and I looked and it turns out that, uh, it was paid for, as far as I could tell, it was paid for last year. I couldn't find it before last year. And then this year, it's being paid for a small amount with general, uh, you know, with parcel tax funds. It's not in our ballot language, and so we just heard from the accountant that that's an issue. So, um, I don't know, would staff like to comment on that or?
Thank you for the question, trustee Reckler. Um, this is a new contract, a new three-year contract to conduct audits. As Michael Ash mentioned on the call previously, Christie White did not do the, the parcel tax audit. We are now going to be.
It's, we're paying for this audit with parcel tax funds. So we're using general funds, bond funds, and we're using parcel tax funds. So I, I think, uh, can we get a clarification of whether we can use parcel tax funds to pay for the parcel tax audit if it's not in the ballot language?
So I've reached out to Melanie Lee, who is our consultant with SCI Consultants, and they manage both our parcel tax and our MRAD. And she is researching the matter. She hasn't gotten back to me yet, but we did receive your inquiry. We are looking into it. And of course, if her answer is that we need to do something different, we will do that. We have not yet created a requisition for this as this is next year's audit and we do not intend to actually, um, create the purchase order until after July first. So there is time to make adjustments and bring them back to you if we need to.
So should it not be voted on tonight?
Well, I think we're trying to just be efficient and ensure that we have a new contract in place. Um, it's a small amount, five thousand dollars. I don't mind bringing it back if it needs to be amended, but I think for the purpose of moving this along and ensuring that we're prepared for the next year's audit, I would ask that we continue to move this one tonight.
And if it, and if it turns out that it's not approved, what will, what will be the action?
If it isn't approved this evening, we will bring it back at a later time. And I'm okay to pull it if the board, um, would like me to do so. We're just trying to be efficient with the timeline.
No, so my question is, if we vote yes, and then somebody comes back and says, no, that's not on the loud expense at a parcel tax, what happens? How would it be corrected?
So as I just mentioned, the purchase requisition won't be created until after the new fiscal year begins, which is July first. So there is still time to make adjustments with the funding source. At that time, I would notify the board that the funding sources have been changed.
Okay, thank you. And then just on these other contracts, which is school services, springboard collective, tutor works and calculus roundtable. It's just all the dates, um, which don't align with tonight's meeting. Well, school services is tonight. It would start date of service. Springboard collective was five-six, tutor works five-six. Calculus roundtable is from eleven-six, twenty-three. So once again, I'm just pointing out that you have contracts that are not aligning with the board's, um, meeting for approval. So no, no comment is necessary.
Okay, thank you, trustee Reckler. Uh, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the five contracts, uh, pulled.
Smith votes, I guess.
Okay, uh, do we have any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote, trustee Reckler. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Dr. Moses, you and your team are doing an excellent job trying to right this ship. And it takes, um, consistency over time equals change. And what we're seeing is that you are consistently talking to the people in your, um, sphere of control to make sure that these things are coming in a timely manner. So I want to thank you for that. I appreciate the work that you're doing and it is being noticed and seen. So thank you for continuing to eat this elephant one bite at a time. And we, uh, we appreciate you for that. I'm complete.
Thank you. Um, okay, we'll move to our vote, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, Reckler, yes.
Okay, President Smith Foles.
Smith Foles, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, everybody, uh, well, that was our last item. So our next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for May twenty-ninth here at La Vanya de John, eh, and I adjourn us at ten-thirty-two.